Town Board, we are live.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the April 4th work session of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Present.
Present.
Here. Present.
Present. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Before we get started, I'd like to read a statement from the East Hampton Town Police Department regarding the school swatting incident. This is criminal harassment called in bomb threat. Many East End schools received a threatening email overnight, which was similar in wording to the mass emails sent to other school districts across New York State over this past week. Law enforcement intelligence deemed the threat to be non-credible and part of a robo-email scheme, but out of an abundance of caution, the East Hampton Town Police Department deployed teams of officers to each school to complete a thorough search and clear each building. We've been in constant contact with school district leadership, the state and county police throughout this incident. Uniformed police officers have been deployed to the schools, and we are monitoring any further intelligence. We applaud the quick and professional response of our local school districts' leadership and want the community to know that clear communication and cooperation between police and schools is routinely tested for situations such as this. You know, it's a disturbing, I guess, commentary on where we are as a, as a nation, but this is the type of thing that, that does happen from time to time, and we have the full faith and confidence in our local law enforcement to deal with these types of situations in the school districts as well. It's unfortunate that we train for these types of situations and do drills, but that's the state of affairs at this time, and hopefully, we will see things improve. Moving on now, today, we have a number of topics to discuss. We'll have bids presented by Gini Caroza, draft code changes relating to GeoCubes, Brian Frank, the U R map modifications. We have two of those, one at Glen Valley Associates, the other is 59 Gardners Avenue, followed by liaison reports, and we do have a few resolutions. But first, we'll have a public comment, where any member of the public may address the board on any topic. We ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. We do have a sign-up sheet, and after I go through the sign-up sheet, I will take by show of hands anyone else who would, would like to address the board, and we also will likely have callers on the line, and I'll go to them as well. First up, we have Kevin McAllister.
Morning, Kevin. Good morning, Supervisor Town Board. My name's Kevin McAllister. I'm founder of Defend H2O, based in Sag Harbor. Sylvia, I want to thank you and Peter for your service for all these years. I know it's a little early, and you still have a ways to go, but thank you in advance, so appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you, Kevin.
A bit of preamble to the presentation on the GeoTextiles. I'd like to talk to you a little bit. Coincidentally, last week, I sent out basically an update on a regulatory review that we had conducted, looking at a state level as well as municipal level. And there was actually a photograph of a pretty elongated GeoTextile structure, basically laced together. Pretty impressive, and impressive as, as far as a feature and its impacts on the beaches, of course. So this is Quag. I know East Hampton's grappling with it. I certainly have been speaking to it. I, I just want to commend the town for taking this on. I don't know the substance of the code amendments, what's, what's proposed, but taking a hard look at GeoTextiles is so important. New York State, quite frankly, the D E C is all over the place. I've looked at about 25 permits in Quag alone. You know, they talk about not interfering with the exchange of sand between the dune and the beach, and yet that photograph speaks volumes. You know, maintaining coverage on them, temporary structures, the same thing the town's grappling with. So to the extent that you take this on, it's so important. You've heard me speak about shoreline hardening, of course. GeoTextiles, as I like to say, is a wolf in sheep's clothing. It's every bit a steel sheet pile, as, as well as a stone revetment. So, but thank you for taking it on. I look forward to Brian's presentation. I'd like to support any meaningful changes to further, I'll say, restricting their permanent placement, because lastly, GeoTextiles, when they do fail, and inevitably they will, it will morph into stone, and then it really becomes permanent, and this notion that these are temporary is, you know, just out the window. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Rob Stamos?
Stanich.
I'm sorry, Stash.
Morning. I'm Rob Stanich, Montauk Dad, outdoorsman, fisher hunter, oyster husband, surfer, hiking, hiker, mountain biker, dog walker, no particular order. I spoke here March 7th in favor of the keeping the town gamelands open for the turk, spring turkey season, for following the D E C policy setting. It's literally an outside authority, our own state government, and debunking some of the safety concerns around it. But I want to talk about something a little bit different today. I was actually glad to hear that there is a counter petition, you know, circling to ban the turkey season. I fully support the other side's right to air their ideas, but just not to impose their will on us. I say, if you think it's wrong to eat meat, don't eat it. If you think it's wrong to hunt, don't hunt. I like turkeys. I also enjoy watching them. I've heard a lot of comments on that. They're also delicious. I love a good turkey B L T. I love smoked turkey with a brie and honey mustard, and of course, who amongst us doesn't, you know, love Thanksgiving dinner with our, our loved ones? Now, I could question the veracity of an online petition that's on a website that's open to anonymous submissions. Basically, anyone who can create an email address can sign that thing. To her credit, we did hear the organizer admit a couple of weeks ago that there were many bogus submissions in there, which she has tried to filter out, but she's also counting city people. If they had gathered a million signatures by now, that wouldn't surprise me. It doesn't matter. The very fact that I can go online, I can recruit my PETA and my Extinction Rebellion friends to come sign my petition, is like another demonstration of we're being attacked by outsiders, right? It's completely tone deaf to have done that. To get, you know, keyboard warriors from out there to come spam what had been kind of a serious dialogue we're, we're speaking about locally. Man, I've gotten a civics lesson from watching these sessions the last few weeks. Hunting, mega mansions, Airbnbs, accessory housing, truck beach, the airport, the gun club, outside values, outside money, outside attorneys. The people of East Hampton feel like they're, they're under attack, and I think that's a common theme, even though we disagree about many of these things. A lot of people are afraid of the change, and they're afraid of, you know, seeing our local traditions got, you know, get attacked. So I don't envy your position, having to sit here and listen to me, and also some of the other quackery and misinformation that's out there. I feel like we hunters need to do more to educate, you know, the public, because there is so much information. I heard that people don't like hunting, and they would literally do anything to obstruct it, lobby damned. I heard a woman say she'd rather see a turkey get eaten alive by a menagerie of predators, rather than end up on my, on my dinner table. That is, that is, that is terrible. I heard a woman complain that the sound of January gunfire in the bottom lands scares her dogs. Anyone who has spent a winter here knows what that is. Is, you know, are ducks next? Are ducks sentient? Is it going to be fish that we can't fish anymore? They'll stop at nothing, and they plan to show the level of disrespect they have for you and for me by staging a protest here next Thursday. You have to be here, but I will be as far away from, from here as possible. So please, this Thursday, vote your conscience, but also please consider your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Captain Joe McBride. Good morning, Joe.
How you doing, Peter? Good morning, good afternoon, whatever. It's almost afternoon. In any case, I'm here representing the Montauk Boltwood and Cappers Association to support the position of the East Hampton Sportsman Alliance regarding traditions that are vitally important to the, the town of East Hampton. And one of the reasons many of us come out here, because the culture, the society, the activities enticed us to go here and come here, between fishing and hunting and other outdoor activities, which I personally enjoy very much. So we would like to let the Town Board know that we support fully the position of the East Hampton Sportsman Alliance, and we will do whatever we can to see that these traditions are continued within our community. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joe. I have Terry O'Reardon here. I see Terry's not here, though.
Terry's not here.
Yes, he's reading his speech.
Yeah, so Bill, if you want to.
Bill O'Leary, reading for Terry. And Terry is the president and co-founder of the East Hampton Sportsman's Alliance, as I'm sure you know. On Terry. At previous Town Board meetings, East Hampton Sportsman's Alliance and supporters have stood up for the D E C's decision to have a 2003 spring wild turkey season in Suffolk County for the entire month of May. This has, here it comes, shaken a lot of nests, ruffled a lot of feathers, and resulted in people flocking to town meetings when this topic is expected to be discussed. Thank you very much. This spring season has already existed for many decades in much of the rest of New York State. East Hampton Town employees and town officials have carefully approved a few designated town-owned areas for small game hunting. These town properties have been used for over a decade for a youth spring turkey season without a single recorded adverse incident. The same with fall turkey season, no recorded incidents. These specifically designated town-owned lands have been available for small game hunting for many years, and these same lands could now be used by licensed wild turkey hunters for this new opportunity. The East Hampton Sportsman's Alliance supports the state D E C's decisions, decision. Hunters are fathers, mothers, sons, daughters, politicians, doctors, lawyers, professional educators, volunteer fire and rescue people, accountants, tradespeople, public service workers, and even CEOs. The point, Terry's point, hunters are people too. The foundations of hunting regulations in America were initiated by hunters and conservationists who saw that the unregulated taking of game fish, shellfish, was putting many species imminently close to total extinction. Our alliance reveres our natural bounty of plants and animals of all kinds. We've worked with the D E C to rejuvenate and reintroduce indigenous species such as quail, wild turkey, hard clam, scallops, oysters, et cetera, to keep a longstanding ecological balance in place and basis of food and income. The East Hampton Sportsman's Alliance would like newcomers to assimilate with our local traditions and not dismiss conservation efforts that have worked here in this town for decades and centuries. The amount of town-owned properties that could be available for the proposed spring turkey season is a very small percentage of all the town-owned properties. The East Hampton Sportsman's Alliance hopes the board can support this opportunity for our local hunting community. Terry O'Reardon.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? David Vuda?
Good morning, David Vuda. I see that on your work session agenda, you have two urban renewal map modifications. I have reviewed all of the records that are pertinent, and I thank you again for making them available in advance of your work session meetings by posting them on the town website. This is a system that is working, and similar process should be used for your regular meetings as well, so that documents that are pertinent can be reviewed in advance. I only have two comments. I realize that you're going to discuss these matters at length with various people from the town presenting them, so I'll be listening carefully, but I only want to just highlight two concerns that I have. With regard to the map modification on behalf of Glen Valley Associates, there's nothing in the paperwork to indicate that the planning board has specifically required and recognized the need that in this open space subdivision, that the reserve that is being created must be conveyed to the town. It's not stated anywhere in the planning board resolution. I'm sure Mr. Joe Nicky is well aware of the requirements of the open space code, that any reserve that's required to be created has to be conveyed either to a homeowners' association, in this case, it's only two lots, or there isn't going to be one, or to the town, or to a environmental organization suitable to take ownership, not ownership, but management responsibilities for the property. So that should be specified. Also, in the proposed modification to the urban renewal map, there's no specific mention of the retention of the obligation to have a 50-foot wide scenic easement along the frontage. There is one lot that is excluded.
Frontage, I'm so sorry, David. Which frontage?
The frontage of Old Northwest Road.
Thank you.
There is one lot, a corner lot, that is, even though it may have been purchased by the same entity, it was not part of the subdivision process, and that's their choice. I think it was a mistake not to merge it into the subdivision, make it a three-lot subdivision, but, you know, you can't tell people what to do with their property in some regards. All I want to do is make sure that the 50-foot scenic easement requirement that will severely impinge upon that corner lot, the requirement is retained on the urban renewal map. The other one that you're going to discuss today involves 59 Gardners, 59 Gardners Avenue, and let me just highlight something that's not in the papers that you were presented with in advance. The whole problem arose from the fact that an up-island developer didn't apparently know how to read carefully and properly the urban renewal maps, and propose an access that they're not allowed to, that unfairly and improperly impinges upon two town properties, and proposed to have a private driveway cut right down the middle of two town properties, where the urban renewal map specified that the town was entitled to merge those two properties by abandoning the road, the paper road between them. The two properties, one is a circular park that was on the original subdivision map going back to 1911, and the other one was a property that the town acquired about 2004, 2005 as an open space parcel. Those two pieces now create a contiguous open space that is a benefit to the town and the community and the environment. The developer didn't understand it. He decided to put his garage on what some would say is the wrong side of the house, but he was told by the building department before one stick of wood was put on the ground or in place, that he had made a mistake, but apparently, they didn't understand, so instead, they continued to build the house as originally designed, but they have suitable alternative access. They've actually cleared access from the southeast corner of the property. There's no need for this proposed urban renewal map modification, and I don't know why it's still being pursued. That's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? Yes, sir. And then I'll go to you, ma'am, afterwards.
Good morning. Nick Greco, Amagansett. Today, you will discuss GeoCubes. The town is seeking to amend the emergency section of the code for a more rigorous review of the initial installation of GeoCubes and make further changes that makes it easier for their removal. The town should also take this opportunity to amend the code to provide a section that is fully fair and addresses the actual way that GeoCubes are being utilized, the last line of defense for many properties. Seems like the code was written for a one-time event, where GeoCubes can be utilized to, to, to temporarily shore up properties, and then those properties can be restored to their pre-erosion state, and GeoCubes can be safely removed. In that, that case, the six-month plus three-month duration works just fine. But we know, based upon photos that Brian and the planning department have prepared and will be presented today, and discussions with this board on prior occasions, that the target of these code changes are the properties that need the GeoCubes, because there may be no other alternatives available to effectively protect their properties. Two additional issues should be addressed with this potential code change. First is the duration of the permit. The building inspector already has discretion to authorize any one of up to five emergency activities. Using the additional input that the planning department recommends, discretion should be granted to the billing department to determine a realistic duration of the permit. This duration could be aligned with the actual site emergency, the feasibility of proposed solutions to manage the emergency, and the time required to implement, implement a permanent solution. In any scenario requiring town approvals or an N R S P, the duration from start to completion is on the order of years, not months, and the nine-month total duration of the code is entirely inadequate. The second issue is a requirement that the GeoCubes be removed on a statutory basis, irrespective of any extenuating circumstances. Even if permanent solutions are being sought, there's no guarantee that these solutions can be timely approved, or even can be completed in the time period for which the permit exists. Under these circumstances, why would the town cause the removal of those GeoCubes with no consideration of the underlying emergency that still exists and that required them in the first place? The code should allow for the building inspector to extend the permit duration and forego the removal while the underlying emergency still exists, based upon specific facts for a specific piece of property. Forcing the removal of the GeoCubes that function as the only protection of homes solely because the permit has expired would be entirely punitive to the homeowner, especially when the town has done little and nothing to assist these homeowners in their plight. The code should be fair and balanced. It should be a fair and balanced set of rules that the whole town follows. And as we know, though, there's no one-size-fits-all solution to everything. The emergency activity section is no different. It should be revised to reflect, reflect the everyday challenges felt by property owners fighting erosion. Those same property owners shouldn't have to fight the town as well for a fair chance to protect their properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greco. Yes, ma'am. She'd like to address the board? Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Jolie Parcher, East Hampton, with a business in Amagansett. And there's been a lot of buzz. Well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to you all, because there's a lot of stuff I've been feeling overwhelmed with in town, and you know way more than I do, and you have people asking you for things. So I really respect and appreciate your hard work in giving us, giving us this good time to talk. But there's been a lot of buzz at the yoga studio, Mandala Yoga, in Amagansett Square, because of this big house that's going up on the back parking lot. I don't know if you've seen it. And at first, we were all saying, is someone really building a hotel there, or is this a new business complex that we didn't hear about? And, you know, but no, it's somebody's house. I mean, I don't know if any of you have seen it. I don't estimate well, but I mean, it's huge. It's going to overlook the parking lot in Amagansett Square and whatever landscaping they do, and it just caused, caused a lot of conversation at the studio. And I ended up reaching out to Jane Maring, who I know, you know and love, and we had a meeting at Scoville Hall on Friday night, and there were over 75 people there. And people were, you know, it was a messy meeting, you know, people were talking and frustrated, and whose job was coming up, how we do this, and hopelessness, and is there a change? And, you know, I spoke up there, and I said, you know, I didn't know this was my job to speak up and say, that's my naivete. I didn't know I should show up here. I thought that was happening, and I don't know, maybe I'm a yoga teacher, I kind of assume, you know, a lot of peace and love, but, you know, and so there's 75 people who are wanting to come up and say, what the heck, you know, somebody said about the hunting, like, when you come to this town, can you respect the traditions of this town, the quality of life, why you came here, the look of this town, you know, the amount of resources that are, are being used to tear down and then rebuild, and the workers that are coming and driving up island, and the products that's coming, and the water usage, and whatever heat you're leaving your house on all year, because maybe I'm wrong, but that person's not living out here. They're not going to live it out here. They're going to come for a month. And I just, I really, I hope it's not too late, you know? How many people do we know that have moved? How many people, how many employees do you need in the government? Teachers that have left because they can't afford to live here. And I think a big part of it is our zoning code. And there was a big cry at the meeting for, what's the code? 20,000 square feet is our maximum? In Shelter Island, what is it, 6,000? In Martha's Vineyard, it's 25 or 2600? Like, you know? And so there's a big call for, can we relook at it and change this code? And we need a moratorium on building, our giant building, until we figure this out, because, I mean, all of us could be somebody that, that has to leave and desperately does not want to leave. And I also wanted to say that at the Chili Chow Down the other day, it was the Hunter's Chili. That was the freaking best one there. So I just want to say, in terms of respecting what is here, there's plenty of room and, you know, but, but let's, let's get on this. Hopefully, it's not too late. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming in, Jolie. Anyone else in the room like to address the board? Yes. Steve?
Good morning, Supervisor and Town Board members. My name is Steve Griffiths. I'm here to show my support for the upcoming turkey season for myself, all the other hunters, especially the youth of our community. I'm not sure of the number of youths, but there are more youth hunting here in East Hampton than I realized. Just one example is, a graduate from our high school joined the East Hampton Fire Department. He was assigned to my company while talking to other hunters in the company. He joined the conversation and mentioned, mentioned he hunted. I was pleasantly surprised. I feel we have to find things for our citizens to do. After all, everyone doesn't want to go play paddleball, tennis, golf, volleyball, softball. We'll complain about everything other people do. The group that is opposed to this season will try to make you believe the woods will be filled with hunters, at the same time, the trails will be filled with hikers. All hunters don't turkey hunt. All hunters don't hunt waterfowl. I don't know a hunter who would set up his waterfowl decoys on a hiking trail. And all hunters don't deer hunt. I go for walks with my wife and our lab puppy, mainly down in Northwest. There are many times we don't see other hikers. Some days, you don't even see another car, let alone a hiker. There's one trail in the grassy hollow area that was cleared, and now you can't even find it. With all the seasons we have to hunt, we've all gotten along. There is no reason why that would change by adding this season. Some people may say turkey, venison, and waterfowl doesn't taste good, but cooked right, the wild game is just as good as any meat you can buy in the store. Besides that, everyone doesn't want to eat tofu. Thanks again, and remember, bog against the world.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else in the audience? Yes. Bill, you have comments of your own?
Yes. So I'm Bill O'Leary, speaking for myself this time. I'm Vice President of East Hampton Sportsman's Alliance. And so I'd like to share here what I think are important counterpoints against intervening, with the proposed intervening to prevent the spring turkey hunting season here. There are five easy ones and one hard one to refute. Number one, should you intervene due to concerns over safety? No. Turkey hunting. Turkey hunting has been going on right here in East Hampton for 14 years already. With shared trails, as Steve just said, already, we get along just fine. Hiking goes on year-round here and there have been no safety incidents. There's no reason that that should be a topic. Personally, I doubt that many people have even noticed actual turkey hunting going on over these 14 years, despite the outcry. Number two, does it justify intervening in the process because of noise and gunshots? Not really. We all appreciate silence, but in this case, it would be one shot for the entire season, two at the most for each hunter. If the hunter went out, if he pulled off getting into a pre-scouted, off-the-trail spot before dawn and the birds were actually there and they were gobbling and he's able to call in the right age, the right sex bird to within 30 yards. If all those things happen, yes, there's one shot, which has been going on for centuries here. So it's not an easy process. No turkey, no shot, one shot per hunter, maybe. Number three, does it justify intervening in this decades-long process because there'll be no more turkeys if we have a turkey hunt? They'll be gone. I love turkeys. No. We all like to look at turkeys and all wildlife. Based on hard data from New York State, a hunt may affect the population of turkeys by an indiscernible 3%. The turkeys are still going to be here, no difference. Plus, that's temporary anyway because the reason the spring turkey hunt is when it is, is that the breeding, the nesting has already taken place. The turkeys in your yard will still be there, no difference. Next, does it justify intervening in the process because this is an extra added season? There's going to be a lot more hunting. Now, we can't possibly allow that, not really. All hunting seasons are reevaluated every single year by the DEC and the scientists there based on populations. And there are additions and deletions every year. That's how the process works. It's gotten a bit messy here because the town has inserted itself into this process, but if this goes through, yes, there'll be more turkey hunting opportunities, but there'll be less other things. There may be a one limit, a one bird limit on goose or something like that. So the process goes on, it comes and goes. It's not unusual, it's been going on for a long time. Finally, the last of the easy ones, we should intervene because the turkeys are our savior from ticks. No. Turkeys probably include them in their widely varied foraging diet, although not all the experts agree on this, as I read in the East Hampton Star. Although why not? Insects are on the list, not at the top of the list, but they're on a very long list that they eat insects. Fine. But, so they probably do, why not? Either way, though, any difference in the tick, the number of ticks out here after hunt is so vanishingly small as to be completely a non-issue and irrelevant. Finally, the hard one, and I would venture to say the real one, should we intervene and not allow this because of humans and animal ethics? It's a hard one. What is in a wild or domesticated animal's consciousness has been studied and debated for centuries and millennia, actually. It can be very thought-provoking, not just when out hunting, but also when you're fishing with your child, killing a fish, clamming, killing a clam, farming oysters, calling the exterminator, and even trimming your plants. Check out the New York Times, this past week, there's a professor who is putting forth that plants have intelligence, language, and make certain noises when you do some things to them. So I don't have the answers to this age-old question and neither does anyone else. Very serious, though, and what should be and must be of greatest interest to animal ethicists and activists is animal cruelty, experimentation, and massive factory farming in the world. That's the important stuff. 10 billion animals, including 45 million turkeys, are killed, slaughtered in factory farms every year in this country alone, horrifying. And we have rules, imagine in other countries. So we are asking the board and the activist community not to instead try to pick off an easy target, which is local guys who humanely, as the law and their conscience requires, tries to bag his one turkey, which after all that rigmarole, you can be sure gets prepared and served at table. So look at it as one less ring of the cash register for a factory farm when he takes his turkey and importantly, a measure of respect for fellow community members who have stood up here and told you multiple times when they should be working and they don't like this process, they've told you how important it is and how they, fellow citizens, value this part of local culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else in the room wish to address the board this time? Jason, do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, we do. Give me a second and I'll unmute them right now. And hello caller, ending 4221, you're on the air.
Thank you, Jason. Good morning. It's Jane Maring in Amagansett. I guess now I would be known as the girl you know and may or may not love. I'm just calling in with two quick things really about public hearings and agendas. So first, it's about the public hearing for the important proposed ADU legislation. If I recall correctly, the public hearing accidentally appeared on the agenda of the March 16th regular meeting. Of course, that was quote canceled. And on that day, a resolution was adopted for a notice of public hearing for April 6th. I looked at your posted April 6th agenda this morning, but I actually do not see the hearing appearing on the agenda for this coming Thursday. So forgive me if I missed something, any changes or re-noticing, but it's not appearing on the agenda. Two things, you know, it's important, it's really important legislation, it's also quite detailed, sorry. Peter?
Yes, Jane, it is not scheduled for the 6th, it will be scheduled for the 20th of April.
Okay, forgive me, I missed that. You know, I try and keep track of stuff, so that's great. And then just on that, you know, there were so many thoughtful documents presented at the work session and there's a detailed draft resolution. And I know this has come up before, but anything that you can do to make it easier and clearer for the public to access those sort of supporting documents going into the hearing, the better. Second, again, maybe something else I kind of blanked out on, I'd like to go back to the proposed adjustments to the invasive species code this board dealt with specifically regarding bamboo. You had that public hearing, I recall on February 16th, I spoke at it, I submitted to the record, like about a baker's dozen of suggested additions and clarifications, but I've lost, again, I've lost the plot from there. I do not recall a resolution adopting the new legislation. Did that happen and I missed it?
That has not been adopted yet, I don't believe.
Okay.
No, we haven't. We wanted to take into consideration your comments, Jane, and I haven't been able to schedule an internal meeting yet with staff.
I so appreciate that. So all I want to do is check myself and also continue to support that legislation. It's such an important step in addressing invasive menace of bamboo and also starting to focus more on this concept instead of revegetation that we always focus on, like after clearing for construction projects, but actually start to think about regeneration of our lands, native vegetation, ecosystems, dune lands, it's a much bigger topic, but I just wanted to say that as a placeholder. And bamboo legislation will be a great and important start, but I believe there'll be more to come. So thank you. I wish everyone wonderful holidays in the week ahead, happy Easter, and happy Passover. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Any other callers on the line, Jason?
One moment, and we have no other callers on the line.
Okay. At this point, we will move forward with our work session agenda topics. And first up, we have Jeannie Carosa, Town Purchaser.
Hello.
Good morning.
Hey, I have one acceptance. It's food service and kitchenware items, and that's Movilla Foods of New York and Sam Talonson. Several extensions, supply and delivery of Hino truck parts, Gabrielli truck sales, supply and delivery of international truck parts, Siocet truck sales, and portable toilets, rental and servicing, and that's with Outback Portable Toilets Incorporated. And several notices coming up. Montauk sand replenishment. We have enforcement, search and rescue for security vessel for marine patrol. Second House restoration phase three, surplus oyster seed sale, mobile food concession at Gin Beach, and an annual contract for cesspool, grease trap, and tank pumping, and finally, printing of envelopes and business cards. And that's it for now.
Any questions for Jeannie? Thanks, Jeannie. Okay, next up, we have the draft code changes regarding GeoCubes. And we have Brian Frank, who's our senior environmental planner, here to present. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Mr. Supervisor, board members. Brian Frank, chief environmental analyst in the town's planning department. I guess I'll start the...
And if Brian, could you just pull the mic a little bit closer?
Closer?
Yes.
To me?
Yes. Speak up, reject, and my hearing is not what it used to be.
People rarely ask me to speak up, it's usually the other...
I may change that later, we'll see other presentations.
I wouldn't be surprised. Anyway, board members, I'd like to discuss with you some changes that the planning department is suggesting in working collaboratively with the town attorney's office and the principal building inspector on changes to the emergency activity section of the town code. The emergency activity section of the code, which is in, it's part of zoning, it's chapter 255, section 4-29, was initially adopted in 2007. It was part of a broader coastal legislation that was the last requisite necessary for the Department of State to accept the town's local waterfront revitalization plan. So these emergency activities were part of a broader code revision that covered a number of topics. Those regulations also were the same legislation that adopted our coastal erosion overlay zone districts and much of the natural resource special permit specific standards that were developed specifically for erosion control structures. The code section, I know we've been speaking about GeoCubes in particular, but the code section really pertains to geo textiles. And at the time, geo textiles, the one that was most often envisioned were something called a geo tube, which is often colloquially described as a sand sausage, a cylindrical geo textile fabric that's filled with sand, that's pumped through in a slurry of sand and water and placed at the toe of a dune or bluff for erosion control. Over time, the application of geo textiles has most frequently taken the form of something called a GeoCube. An individual GeoCube is a one cubic yard, it's three by three by three, it's filled with sand. Each one weighs, I've seen different numbers, I think it depends on the size of the sand, but about 1,700 pounds each. They're filled with sand, they're stacked and tied together, interconnected to form basically the same as a seawall. In the emergency activity sections of the code, a geo textile is the only temporary emergency measure that the code authorizes. Other emergency activities consist of non-structural restoration, the relocation of the structure that's imperiled from coastal erosion, or allowing the building inspector to authorize emergency repairs to the structure to help shore it up to prevent more serious structural failures. So the geo textile is the only temporary emergency measure authorized. Its duration is specifically limited to six months. It does allow for a three-month extension and the building permit requirements for a geo textile include a removal plan. So when a person applies for this type of structure, part of those requirements are a submission of a plan that explains how the structure is going to be disassembled and how that natural feature is going to be restored at the end of this duration. So the duration of the permit really shouldn't surprise any homeowner, contractor, or agent associated with the structure. They really have every reason to expect going in the limitation and the temporary nature of this structure. And if you read the enabling legislation of 2007 that authorized the structure, that timeframe was developed because of the perception that a temporary structure of that nature is unlikely to result in a lot of the long-term impacts that are often associated with coastal erosion structures. So it was really intended for an interim, an interim emergency measure to prevent the loss of, most often a house, a principal structure, with the understanding that it has to be removed, restored, and more permanent solutions developed after that authorization This is on the screen, this is an example of some of the GeoCubes under, GeoCube seawall under construction. You can see that this is not the, this is not the sandbag that you often see people preparing on the news in advance of a flood, a riverine flood, where you see people with wheelbarrows and shovels manually filling sandbags and stacking them up ahead of rising floodwaters. These require heavy machinery in the form of cranes and bulldozers, bulldozers to help fill them with sand, cranes to lift them and stack them into place here. Their installation, I've observed a number of these under construction now, it's a little bit more invasive than simply just placing a sandbag at the toe of a dune. It involves excavation, but you'll see a little bit more in another photo. These structures have been installed on at least six properties in East Hampton Town. None of the properties that have installed these structures have removed the seawalls at the expiration of their permits. And they've been in place, as the board is probably aware, for multiple years in some cases. I think it doesn't really take an environmental professional, if you observe any of these structures in the field, you can see a lot of the same adverse environmental impacts that are often associated with erosion control structures. And as this board knows, a lot of that 2007 legislation was intended to really accentuate the importance of the town's beaches and natural resources and help really provide tight controls about when erosion control structures are used because of their adverse impacts. It's, you know, the beaches, it's codified the importance of beaches to the town, both economically and culturally. But you can observe these structures in the field and you will see flank erosion at the end of these structures. You will see a loss of public access, where at high tide, there's a loss of forced draw passage along the beach. You can observe beach lowering. the beach. You can observe beach lowering and a general diminution of the coastal habitat that a lot of the town code regulations, natural resource regulations in particular, are intended to protect. And aesthetically, that's an exposed white plastic wall, essentially. And I think you can see that in the next slide coming up. So, each of these, each of these bags is three feet tall. It might be squished down a little bit for weight. So, that wall that you're taking a look at now is a little bit less than six feet above the elevation of the beach. Since that photograph, there has been additional beach lowering. That lower course is a little bit more exposed. And again, I think the impact of these structures over time is pretty undeniable. It's demonstrable. It's documented. I have a ton of photographs from some of these properties. And it's clearly contrary to the intent of protecting the shoreline with an erosion control structure. There's no real environmental review. There's no long-term mitigation. And the reason that we're here today is it's become apparent that the code is not adequate to ensure that these structures are used in the way that they were intended to use. So, just to summarize what some of these code changes do, it does give the town more control over how they're installed and how they're removed. These code changes really are only going to apply to the, any new structures going forward. It doesn't address the existing structures that are out there. That's most effectively a separate conversation. It empowers the building inspector to consult with more town officials in assessing whether an erosion, a geotextile is necessary. The existing code limits that consultation essentially to the fire marshal or the town engineer. It allows the building inspector to consult with another private engineer, other than any engineer that may be associated with the design of the project, again, to assess both the impacts of the structure and the vulnerability of the principal structure in question. It limits the length of the geotextile. If we're going to protect somebody's house in the short term, then the, then this structure should be used to protect the house, not necessarily span the entire width of the property. It requires the posting of a security equal to no less than twice the construction cost. And it requires an access easement, which would allow the town, if necessary, entry to the property and remove the structure if, if the property owner chooses not to do so. That's a summary of the code change. Happy to address any questions that the board may have, either your own questions, anything that you heard from any member of the public today. I'll do my best.
Yeah. Thanks, Brian. I have some questions and also some comments, particularly when you're talking about something that's meant to be a temporary emergency structure to, and the importance of those two words. And when you talk about impacts, you've talked about impacts to the town beaches, but there's also can be potential harmful impacts to neighboring properties, which would be scoured out by the construction of a hard surface. And, you know, since 2007, we certainly had evidence then. But since that time, with sea level rise and the studying of our coastal areas and the impacts of the hard structures that exist, we have definitive proof of the negative impacts that can happen, not only to the reduction of any beach existing anymore, but also to the impacts to neighbors of these hard structures. So, I think it's essential to keep this type of structure temporary and for emergency use only. I think leaving it there for years and years and years will bring very harmful consequences to the town beaches, to neighboring properties, and to the areas in town that are most vulnerable to sea level rise. They don't help. They hurt. So, I support the town amendments. I hope that we can find ways to support folks that need the emergency permits to, for their principal structures, but also give us the ability to have them removed and not have the ones that stay there forever. Sandbags don't last forever. It's not, it's a temporary solution even by their own design. So, for me, leaving them there in perpetuity is not the answer to any solution for any homeowner.
Limiting the length of the structure will help provide a little bit of better protection to the adjoining properties, too, by having that structure limited to whatever's necessary to protect the house if we're talking about a residential property.
Yeah. I've also seen a better application even of hard structures where it's up against the house foundation rather than where it interacts with the coastal processes, which it will get destroyed anyway, whatever it is. Even hard structures get undermined, can't keep out the water. So, I think limiting the length is also important, the time, the length. It's an emergency structure, temporary emergency structure. That's what's in this part of the code. In terms of coastal shore hardening for chronic erosion, say, we have other code sections and environmental reviews from our planning department that allow that, but also evaluate the design for effectiveness and for pointing out any unintentional impacts.
Correct.
Brian, I go to the security and posting of the security. That's going to come off of no less than twice of the construction costs. Who's going to be providing construction costs? The property, the applicant, or is that get verified by the town also to make sure that the amount that would be secured financially is correct for potential future use if needed?
I believe the amount will be determined the same way the fee for the building permit is determined right now. I don't know that we have a verification process built into that at this time.
David, is that like a performance bond, like for Southwork, when they had to supply us with a performance bond before they could start the project?
Yeah, in a way, but this will be more of a security than a performance bond. But yes, the same action in the end, it'd be the same final response would be removal if they've been there too long.
So, that doesn't become taxpayers' responsibility?
No.
Taxpayers of the town's responsibility.
It's on the applicant.
Sorry. I would just like to say that, you know, the intent of the emergency permit for these types of structures was just that, to be a temporary stopgap measure to give a property owner an opportunity to secure that principal structure until other plans can be made. And those other plans would include relocation of the principal structure landward to be out of harm's way. And many of the reaches that we have within the town, our LWRP doesn't allow for permanent coastal structures. And the reason for that is that we live on an island that's constantly eroding, has always been eroding ever since the Ice Age. And, you know, we have as our very most precious resource, our beaches. This town attracts its whole economy based on the beaches, really, and the free public access to them. And we've seen the diminishment of public access because of these structures along shorelines that are impacted by erosion. Erosion actually is the natural process that provides sediment to the beach. Banks eroding, dunes eroding, spreading that sand along and transporting it along the littoral drift. When you cut off that supply of sediment by having a coastal structure or a wall, you're retaining it. And the amount of sediment or sand in front of that property gets washed away by the sea action, lowering the beach, causing a situation where we have, even at low tide, no portion of the beach exposed for the general public's use. And I think really what we're faced with is a situation of private property owners, you know, often spending huge amounts of money to be in close proximity to that beautiful resource, what looks like a benign and benevolent ocean or bay, when we know that it's not such. And due to storms and natural processes over time, they're living in imperiled environment. And a lot of people don't realize that at time of purchase. And I think, you know, we need to do a better job as a community to protect that most precious resource. And this is, I think, one step towards doing that. But the broader conversation is really coming down to ensuring public rights of access and protecting that resource over time. And the public benefit has to outweigh the private interests in this if we're going to maintain our beach community.
And much of what you just said is reflected in the town's comprehensive plan, the LWRP, and the zoning code.
This is not a new concept.
I'll add the CARP plan, which we recently adopted into the comprehensive plan as well. And our code should reflect our comprehensive plan.
I do also think that the DEC has to coordinate better with the town chips on there. I know we've heard about their coastal zone management being reviewed and changed. I think coastal zone management should be left up to local governments more than the DEC coming in overriding a lot of times or giving their opinion. So, as we go in, as the supervisor was saying, different layers to this approach, protect our resources on there, is making sure that the DEC understands that we have a better knowledge of the areas in our local areas most of the times than they might. And then they should coordinate with us better.
It's also worth pointing out that the, that the state's coastal erosion hazard area program has a lot of parallel goals to the, to the town regulations. And the two regulations should really be kind of, whenever possible, working together. It should be kind of rowing in the same direction, so to speak, and should be complementing each other.
So, when was the last time SEHA maps from the state were updated?
To my knowledge, they've never been updated. They were adopted, they were drafted and incorporated in the law in, I think, 1988. I think the law calls for them to be updated every 10 years.
Yeah.
1988.
1988.
That was in...
Those are the official SEHA maps, minus any individual property map modification. And they've done a number of those over the years. But the state's maps that went out to public hearing, that happened in the mid-'80s.
With no updates as intended?
Correct.
In the code. And I just want to say, just Brian, tell us what SEHA is for folks who don't know.
Coastal erosion hazard area.
Thank you. And there's a management plan.
That hazard area is only encroached further inland over time, given erosion.
There is, the maps, new maps were drafted. I've seen a sample of them. There's a lot more information in them. There are certainly a lot more streets on them than there were in 1988.
Sure.
They are rectified to work with contemporary GIS systems. It's not, I'm not, I can't tell you why the update hasn't gone farther.
So, I just wanted to say, Brian, I appreciate you distilling this down for us in this PowerPoint. It's really helpful. I think it's helpful for the community when they go to take a look at it. And I'm supportive of the proposed code changes. I just had a question for Kate. We had discussions, you had some comments about like the actual wording of the code amendments, because I'm guessing that this is going to be ready for public hearing shortly. So, I don't know if you had any chance to discuss that with...
I did. I had a discussion with Brian about my suggestions. I didn't bring them up since the amendments weren't in front of us in public session. So, but yeah, there are some other areas that I think we can just tighten up. There's some vague, vague language, as is usual for a draft, and we could discuss them going further in terms of evaluation by which departments, some of the details, just tightening it up so that, for me, it's important that the town, the building inspector work with the planning department, because that's where our evaluators exist. So, when I see something like any department can consult with any department, I don't know if that's the best language for use. I certainly would like to see the planning department involved. And also, if we're going to...
Planning in natural resources, I would agree.
Yeah. If the building department is going to ask for comments, I think that a memo should be produced rather than just having a conversation. I think whatever comments are solicited and written, they should be in writing for the record. It wouldn't take long to write up a memo. And this way, there's something that people can, the public and future evaluators can look at the reasoning behind these decisions.
So, it might be a good idea to take that draft, once we get it tweaked, and just do another quick review of that in public session and address it. Does that sound like something the board wants to do then?
Sounds like a plan.
Should we circulate the draft first and get your comments back and then bring an amendment?
Yeah. We have the draft. I sent back comments.
And Kate sent comments back on March 30th.
So, do you want us to incorporate all that first from everybody and then bring it back? Or you just, I mean, that's what we'll post the comments to date?
I agree with what you're saying.
Is there anybody?
If we can go, like, you know, the planning, you know, planning department, natural resources department, engineer or outside engineer professional, by officials, I would rather take officials out on there. I would rather have by departments or their designees.
So, let's just take a moment leading up to the next work session and make any further comments and revisions, and then we'll bring it back for...
A few changes that we've seen that have a consensus.
And we can schedule it for hearing.
Yeah. I just want to say, I agree with everything that's been said here. And I've followed your comments too, Kate. And I think it's appropriate. I think the timeframe is appropriate back to this actual piece of legislation. And, you know, partly, I think homeowners need to understand that they do have a time limit and that they can't leave them there forever, because it looks as though what's happened is they just leave them there forever. So, they need to have a plan. And this is the only way for them to get to a plan, whether it's, you know, whatever it is that they have to do to secure. We've given them the opportunity. They need to, you know, go with what the code says. Yeah. And I think it's important also, the longer they stay there and the more deteriorated they become, that we're actually, we're not actually, but it gives the homeowner a very false sense of security that these will actually continue to help them over time, rather than to seek a more permanent solution, whether it be living shoreline or whatever. But I wouldn't want those homeowners to sit there and think, and another impending, you know, cat, significant hurricane that, oh, it's still going to protect me. I would hate for them to think that.
That's a good point.
Yeah. And that resource in front of a waterfront home, in most cases, is the public resource. It belongs to every one of us. And we have a right to have that resource in perpetuity. And, you know, that's where the balance really has to go in favor, in my opinion, of the public ownership of the land in front of waterfront properties. The shoreline is ephemeral. It's constantly changing. And, you know, we risk sacrificing that public resource for private interests if we don't really take a careful look and ensure through our code and enforcement the protection of that resource. So, next up, we have...
So, just to put a following, so Brian, we'll look at the language of the drafts and get me information. Maybe we'll bring it back next week or the week after, just to go over that language again.
Yeah. I think just to run through the actual code amendment language next work session would be helpful. And then we can schedule for public hearing. Everybody's in agreement that it's ready to go.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next up is the UR map modification for Glen Valley Associates. John?
We have Eric presenting that. Yeah, I can. You want to? Yeah, I can. Yeah, I'm going to in a second. Eric Chance, Assistant Planning Director. I'll give you a rundown of the proposed UR map modifications. Just let me connect the visual here for you.
Give me a minute or so, because I got to close out a bunch of stuff here. Give me a minute or so, because I gotta close out a bunch of stuff here.
Okay, so to save some time while I'm loading this up, Glen Valley is an application to modify the U R map. I can give you the exact number in a second of that map. It's a property up in northwest. Basically, there's an application in front of the planning board for subdivision to divide the parcel into two lots. It has the requisite yield under the zoning code for two lots. And hopefully now you can see an aerial on G I S. I can zoom way out here to show you where this location is. That's one of the original lots there. So you can see that to the north and west of the school there. I will zoom in further so you can see the subject parcels, which are numerous individual tax map parcels. I will try to clarify this for you by, sorry, clicking on all of them. As you'll see as I click on these, it's a bunch of little pieces of individual tax map parcels. And basically, under the existing U R map, which, once I'm done here, so you can see the area there, this is Zoned A Residence. They're proposing to divide what is currently one U R parcel into two. Both are, again, are the requisite lot area. I believe one is about fifty-nine thousand square feet, one's about forty-eight thousand square feet. This is the existing U R map. So just jumping back real quick to the aerial, just to show you, the property on the northwest corner here is an individual and separate parcel under the U R map. This parcel, which is all these little pieces that you see here, is parcel number sixty under the U R map. So again, you can see that parcel that's not included is in gray. The remainder of that area is this one parcel. And then the applicants are proposing essentially to divide it into two parcels. Again, this has been in front of the planning board for preliminary subdivision. Normally, many of the town board members are aware that normally with a two-lot subdivision, a lot of times it's handled as a sub waiver or minor subdivision. In this case, since the properties are within the water recharge overlay district, they have to be handled as an open space subdivision. You can see a reserve has been drawn on the southern portion of the property, which is where there's a small area of steep slopes. It also provides a buffer. That's a twenty-five percent reserved area, which meets the code requirement of open space. There were some comments received on this, where originally that was listed as a scenic easement. It is required to be a reserved area. Again, this is going through the formal subdivision process in front of the planning board. So it will go for final subdivision approval. During that process, we'll clarify all the map notations, clarify locations of easements, clarify that the reserved area should be dedicated to the town, that kind of standard, you know, keep keeping and cleanup stuff that's done during the final subdivision process. So again, these properties have the requisite lot area. The planning board has granted preliminary approval. The planning department has no objection to the modification as it's shown in front of you.
And Eric, that southerly reserve area that is fifty feet wide?
Well, the mention was about an easement along Old Northwest Road, which would be on the left-hand side of the property.
Right.
That's required.
So that'll be in place. And it looks like there is a small line there. Is that the?
That's actually parcel lines. But yeah, roughly that idea. But that buffer will be incorporated into the reserved area, so.
I know there was public comment on that earlier. Just wanted to make sure.
How deep is that, that out parcel lot? Do you have a rough idea of how deep?
Which is this one?
Yeah.
I don't know, but I can tell you.
I guess just because based on the fifty-foot easement, I think it's probably.
It takes up a large portion of that property.
A big part of it, but I think there's still.
Yeah, and again, so, yeah, about fifty percent of it. Probably about a hundred feet deep.
Okay.
And again, that parcel's not actually included in this proposal. It's a separate parcel, as you can see there. It's parcel sixty-one, which is parcel sixty, proposed to be divided into sixty A and sixty B.
Eric, you let me know what's the size of parcel fifty-nine?
Parcel, well, okay, sure. Well, it's a little tricky, because it's three individual tax map pieces, or, nope, they have been combined. So I could tell you right away, easily, it is just over twenty thousand square feet.
So it's a half acre?
Yes.
Roughly, yeah. And the one south of it that's vacant, is that combined? I think that was parcel sixty-two and three on the plot.
On the, on this one?
Sixty-two, bottom left corner.
Oh, okay. And sixty-four, is that what you?
Yes, yes.
Doesn't look like they've been combined as required. Let me just go back to the math. Well, they're roughly twenty-two thousand square feet and twenty-one thousand square feet. So a lot of these lots in this area are similar to the B Residence minimum zoning. Again, though, the lots of the subject U R map are proposed to meet the A Residence zoning requirement, which is a forty thousand square foot minimum.
So could I take that back? So options right now is that it's one lot? Is that correct? And one lot, you'd be able to build to the G F A there. Now, if not, it's going to be two houses approximately fifty-six hundred square feet?
Yeah, tough to do the math off the top of my head.
It was one point two, one point three acres.
In doing this, is there any mitigation potentially to cap the maximal G F A of the lots?
It's a consideration that you could have. It's not something that the planning board discussed, just basically because they meet the minimum lot area. But yeah, I'm not sure the exact numbers, but because the house size has both a percentage and an allotment by lot of sixteen hundred square feet plus a percentage, if you divide this into two lots, then in theory, the net, you know, amount of total gross floor area would increase by sixteen hundred square feet. So it's a consideration.
I'm so sorry. Can you repeat that? I apologize.
Well, right, you know, when you're calculating the allowable G F A for a residence on any individual parcel, there's a raw number allotment, sixteen hundred square feet, plus a percentage based on lot area. So if you have one lot, it's that, it's one, you know, sixteen hundred allotment. If you have two, you have sixteen hundred and sixteen hundred, then a percentage based on that aggregate lot area. So once you go from one lot to two lots, you're, you know, if the lot area is not altering, then you are.
The reserve area would be taken out of that first lot.
The reserve area would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it wouldn't be taken out of the first.
It wouldn't be taken out of the first lot, because it's not a requirement. Based on the square footage. Okay.
Yeah, and the reserved area requirement is twenty-five percent. So it probably works out evenly, but I did not crunch those numbers out of time.
So my, I know the last note on here is that, and then the request here right now is the recommendations is that they don't want the town board to make a decision on this yet.
No, the idea was basically that the, the, yes and no, the planning board at least was holding off, is going to hold off on the final until the town board makes the decision on the, on the U R map modification. We were discussing a little bit of the procedure here, because there was a question as to whether or not the applicant should come to you first for the, before they get preliminary subdivision approval from the planning board. But they now have the preliminary subdivision approval. That's, that makes sense, because the planning board really has purview over lot layout and things like that. Again, that is not anticipated to change substantively. So basically, the idea would be that you, with any conditions, or, you know, approve or deny the U R map modification, then the applicants would come back for the final subdivision, which really is mostly notations and clarifying, you know, where the, who the reserved area is going to be dedicated to, almost certainly the town, you know, those cleanup elements. So yes, you can render a decision.
And water recharge, this is water recharge overlay, so the clearing is restricted to?
That's correct.
How much?
Again, don't have it up to my head.
I'm sorry? It's a percentage, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So what I'm trying to get to is, there's a known entity, could be one large lot, one large house, based on that.
Yep.
That would have maybe more buffering, maybe some more clearing, but a known entity of one structure.
Correct.
Has that changed the character of the community there now with two structures? Two clearing and two separate envelopes instead of one envelope? And that's what I'm trying to get to a little bit.
Yeah, I think if you look at the aerial, you'll get an idea as to the nature of the neighborhood. And actually, I think the lots to the north are either comparable or maybe slightly even smaller than what's being proposed.
Yeah. Yeah, most of, as you were asking about surrounding lots, most of the lots in this neighborhood are in the vicinity of a half an acre, whereas one acre zoning is the minimum.
So, you know, we've talked about it, it having frontage on Old Northwest Road, but it's also got quite a bit of frontage on Mulford Avenue, for those who are familiar with Mulford Avenue. But I, I mean, from my look at it, I don't think it's inconsistent with the, with the neighborhood in terms of lot size. And, you know, generally, I don't have any objection to altering the map here.
So I just have a couple of questions, Eric. So, so the fifty-foot easement off of Old Northwest Road, they're now proposing that to be in a reserved area.
Correct.
And they, so a little bit in my head, it's like double dipping.
Yeah, that was something that came up and really sort of in the opposite direction of the town, at least as far as the open space requirement. You can't double dip on the applicant.
Right.
You know what I mean? So it's sort of like, are they double dipping by getting, you know, their reserved area and the easement? But I think it actually goes the other way, where the easement requirement, first of all, is an easement that hasn't been filed yet. So the one lot is being subdivided and then getting the reserved area requirement. But the easement itself is intended, as illustrated, you know, as noted in the U R map, as a buffer for Old Northwest Road. It's meant to be a visual buffer. So basically, when we talked about this in the early stages of the preliminary subdivision application, you can't require the easement, remove it from their lot area, and then make them do the other twenty-five percent, as long as they're incorporating that buffer within the required open space allotment. It doesn't matter if it's easement, reserved area, that's how the map gets drawn. In this case, though, the intention is to have the entirety of that area be a reserved area, which would be dedicated to the town.
The hockey stick portion, I guess I would call it. How wide is that? That seems pretty narrow.
Sure. I can tell you if I scale out the map here.
And then as part, to add on to that, as Barnes Road, Barnes Avenue, is that a?
Yeah, the idea here.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, the idea here was to, and also, I guess, so I believe the width of that is about thirty feet, give or take. I don't, I don't know exactly, but if you look at the aerial here, you'll see, obviously, this is again Mulford, Mulford is the road to the north. So, you know, if you're looking at where you're going to put the buffer here in the reserved area, it made the most sense to have, you know, there's this portion of right-of-way that the applicant, or the owners of this lot could claim to the halfway point of the right-of-way here, which, keep that in mind, that'll come up in the next conversation.
Yeah, it should come up in this one, too.
Well, and these neighbors here to the south have already claimed their halfway portion. So the idea here was, it didn't really make sense to have a buffer along the road, for obvious reasons. The, really, the question here was whether or not to have it over here. But again, you have Woodlot Lane, you know.
And that could be abandoned as well to the center line, could it not?
No, 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 that's improved. That's improved.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so this is the only area that's.
Doesn't really show up as being open on the.
So I just wanted, so they could, we could, or, right now, it's the map reads, there's a reserved area, and then they could abandon to the center part, which doesn't that fragment what we've just done? I mean, that doesn't make sense to me at all.
Yeah, it's a good point, and to be honest with you, it's something I hadn't considered in this. Duly noted, and I think as the, when we get to the final, that's something to consider. But yeah, that's a very good point. I see exactly what you mean, is that, you know, if along this turquoise line here, your reserved area comes along here, and then they can claim that portion. I mean, obviously, there's not much they can do with it.
No, it'll become part of their property and lawn in no, in no short order. And there's an electric easement running through there as well. So can that be cleared for the utility to access?
I.
Through our reserve?
That's a good question.
If we get the reserved area, we would.
There's already an electric easement running through it.
Yeah, yeah, let me secure the survey here.
The other side of it is, they could abandon it now and use that towards their calculations too, which is probably something we'd rather.
But who has the electric easement?
It looks like it's for the, for the whole entire subdivision, because it goes all the way back towards Barnes.
Yes, yeah, there is an electrical easement. That's another great point. I have to look into what exactly that says. I would assume that you're permitted to trench and not leave clearing, but I'll look into that, because yes, that would be through the reserve. I do see as it's drawn here, though, they did incorporate the portion that's to be abandoned into the reserved area. So you wouldn't have that little strip in between, because it is part of the reserved area. But yeah, that's something to look into.
Would that be a requirement that they?
Make it a requirement.
That they abandoned the road and incorporated it into the?
Of course, yep.
The other thing I might consider, though, is, instead of this long flagpole, hockey stick looking, that the reserve needs to, you know, I would have incorporated lot fifty-three, you know, the little parcel, lot fifty-three. It needs, I mean, this is such an odd reserve area, there's really not a nice woodland square or piece, like incorporate that and make these lots. I mean, they can still get a, we can get a bigger reserve area, and they can still meet the requirement, one acre.
Sure.
So they could move the center line over what's dividing lots.
No, I see exactly what you're talking about. In essence, instead of having this little strip use that area.
Exactly.
About here. That was discussed by the planning board. They opted to go with this, because they felt it provided a buffer for the residential neighbors to the south. But it's certainly, it's certainly a good point.
Why would we abandon it and then put it into reserve?
I'm sorry?
Why would we authorize the abandonment of the road if we're just going to take it back anyway?
They're allowed to do it as a matter of right. It's just really the fact that they haven't done it yet, but they could have, you know, they could have went on Monday and claimed their abandonment as a matter of right with the assessors and then come in Tuesday for a subdivision. So it's something they already have as far as land as a matter of right under the U R map.
They think they should complete that before they go in.
Yeah. So in, at the planning board level, I should also, because we're going to look at it in the next one, an access point for lot sixty A.
Yep.
To make sure that that's clear.
Yes. Yeah, that's a typo on the map, although, well, it's actually not even really, as, since this is something that's come up a lot lately with U R map modifications, the standard notation that we have on our U R maps is a little bit confusing as far as that dot. First of all, this is somewhat of an open-ended discussion that John and I have had of, so if you look at sixty B right now and where that dot is.
Yeah.
Does that mean the driveway has to come in at exactly that location? That's somewhat of an open question.
Historically not.
Yeah. And I don't believe so, but. The reason, and this does actually match the standard sort of way that the access points are drawn, the reason you have one on sixty B and not on sixty A.
Because it was a one lot at one time.
Well, no, it's because sixty A is entirely, only has one road frontage. So really, the dot indicates the.
Which road?
I gotcha.
It's intended to be the access point. So if you look here, you have that, it was called wooded lot lane on the aerial. This would now be a corner lot. So the dot denotes that the access should be off this road, not this road.
Okay.
So it's a little, yeah, you look at each lot and you look for the dot and see where the access is, but since sixty A only has one choice, it's not standard to put that dot there.
Got it.
And it does look like clearing setbacks would be forty up to, closer to fifty feet as far as clearing, clearing setbacks, but their clearing line on this proposal that you showed earlier is, in some areas, particularly on Woodlot Lane, might be closer to sixty, sixty-five feet.
Sounds about right. Yeah, so as far as, and not to, you know, jump the gun here in the board's discussion, but if you do want to see a reconfiguration of the reserved area there, that is something that the planning board is going to have to reconsider, you know, have a discussion about again, and then probably hold, you know, another public hearing, which isn't the end of the world. But basically, you know, go back through sort of the preliminary map drawing layout. But that is your right, as the town board, being, you know, the applicant needing your approval for this U R map modification. So I just flagged that as, you know, the other comments we've heard so far are all things that could be incorporated into a final subdivision approval, but that's something you should really decide on, because that, that has a much more profound effect on the process.
It's the board's pleasure here. It's the board's pleasure here. We generally supportive of the modification, map modification, are there specific caveats? Do you want the planning board to look at this again, or are we comfortable with it?
I mean, I'd like the planning board to look at the reserved area and make it one block instead of this long 20-foot wide, soon to be incorporated into each, um, property and, and make it really meaningful. I, I don't think this is meaningful.
So you have. Yeah. With the abandonment though, doesn't that make the buffer that much wider? It's like half the roadway?
No, it doesn't make it, yeah, it might make it another.
Eric, what's the, what's the unopened portion of the road width there?
I believe it's 25, but I will look.
25, so it's.
So you'll have 75 feet.
20 actually.
It's 20.
It's a 40-foot road?
So 20 plus 25, so you're what, 45 feet?
Right.
And you have a 50-foot scenic easement on the roadway, uh, on, or Old Northwest. So basically you have nearly 50 feet on two sides of the property.
Yes. And, and that was the intention of the planning board was to buff off both sides.
I don't know. I support that layout. I think, you know, again, those lots are larger than the neighboring lots in the neighborhood. They, they're going to have a buffer from the road, buffer from properties to the south.
And, and also with now with also the new policy as far as clearing, it has to be marked out on surveys.
Yeah, and it's water recharged. So there's going to be additional clearing limitations on them as well.
Has the town ever requested, uh, a cap on GFA?
Um, on, uncertain subdivisions, this isn't one where they normally would. You know, if there, if there was, um, an existing aesthetic in the area or, you know, historic resources or aesthetic resources that warranted limiting buildings to a certain size, then that's certainly something that's often incorporated into covenants and restrictions or other, you know, conditions, but.
I mean, I'm talking about specific natural feature here. So it's that you try and draw the nexus. It's, you know, if you want to address GFA, we should probably do that comprehensively and not do it on a.
Lot by lot.
You know, on a lot by lot basis and.
I agree. We should take a look at the dimensional tables overall rather than.
But I think that's a separate conversation.
Yeah. And rather than imposing something just on this particular lot.
I agree.
So I, I'm generally supportive of what the, you know, the memo that the planning board wrote to us and, um, could support approving the application.
I would also.
Okay. So it seems like we have, uh, consensus on that.
So we'll, we'll, um, set this for a public hearing for your month.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. And that brings us up to the next UR map modification, which is 59 Gardners Avenue.
Sure. Um, just give me a chance to get up these, uh, visuals for you. So this one is a bit more complicated and this is a property over in Springs. Yeah.
Considering where the designated access was.
I just want to, before I start going into the particulars here, I'll show you where this is located with a sort of a wide shot. So, okay. Battling technologies. So hopefully you can see the aerial. Again, I'm zoomed pretty far out here, but this is the subject parcel. Uh, this request does not involve a subdivision, uh, or any redrawing of property boundaries. It's at its, at face value, merely a request to relocate the required access point on this parcel. And I will zoom in a little bit here on the aerial and when I do, you will see that construction has begun on this property of a single-family residence. There's also a swimming pool, uh, that is being constructed that you can't see on this aerial just because it's from, um, I believe March of last year and that, that happened subsequent. So basically, and to make things further a little confusing here, um, the request is to relocate the required access point from Gardners to Gardners. What I mean by that.
So basically we don't need to do anything.
Move on. Um, so I'll show you the, the existing UR map right now, but Gardners Lane is improved, uh, and then comes around here. This is all, um, asphalt, uh, that hits obviously the southeast corner of this lot. And then up to the northwest, there's also Gardners Lane that comes around down here on this corner. Uh, the applicants are requesting that the access point be moved from the southeast corner to the northwest corner. You can see on the aerial here that this is the garage of the home. Um, so basically the home was, the foundation was laid, um, with, with access to come from the northwest. So basically their proposal though, as you can see here in construction vehicles, you can see on the aerial have already used this as an access point and cleared in these areas. Um, their proposal is to modify the access where they would have to come in this direction. Obviously, as you can see, and it has partially been done, the clearing has happened. This would necessitate additional clearing as opposed to just taking access from this corner here that hits existing asphalt. And further complicating and exacerbating the problem of that additional clearing, which both the planning department and the planning board, um, do not look upon, well, view that as a, certainly an undesirable aspect of this request, that additional clearing. This parcel here, it was not purchased with CPF, but it is a town recreational open space, uh, parcel. And then this sort of island median here that was drawn in the right of way, uh, in the original old filed map is also owned by the town. So, and then you have these road right of ways here where, again, I'll show you on the UR map. The surrounding property on all these right of ways that exist here on these sides, on both sides of these are to be abandoned to the midway point, and then any adjoining property owner can, can claim that portion. Um, so basically on this, although Gardners is improved over here, so basically all this woods you see here to the halfway point, this property owner, which is us, the town, has right to claim that, uh, all the way down to here. And then again, over on this side, the town is the property owner. So technically the town could claim this portion that I'm highlighting here. Um, obviously there's not much reason to do it. We already own it. Um, but just keep that in mind when you look at, um, the areas that could be abandoned, because that does come into play with this request. Um, because the applicants technically could claim to the halfway portion along the west and the south of this property. Um, they have not done so. They have done so. So, uh, that happened just recently, apparently. Um, but basically, uh, the planning board, uh, discussed this. The planning department flagged the fact that, um, in, you know, changing that access point. First of all, there doesn't seem to be any practical reason to do so. Um, the access point as it's drawn now is the closest location to an improved road. There's certainly downsides to it, namely the addition of clearing, uh, that would need to occur, uh, in order to run a road, a, a longer distance. It also, even though this isn't one big contiguous tract of, you know, nature preserve or any, you know, um, specially designated town open space, it is in effect, that area of green and then the, the area of woods, um, to the west of this parcel does serve as a contiguous tract of town-owned open space, uh, that the town has no intention of opening, uh, for any reason. So it acts as, you know, a wooded area in this densely populated area of Springs. Um, so bisecting it with a road is not viewed as favorable. Additionally, uh, although it is somewhat in question, um, between records that the applicant submitted, records that the planning department was able to find and records submitted by the public, um, the property was issued a building permit to construct the residence in the general configuration that it has now. That was followed shortly thereafter by stop, stop work orders. Um, so because it was discovered that, um, the access point is supposed to come from the southeast.
So, so can we just talk about that last point for just a moment? So they submitted a plan that showed access as they've constructed it and they were issued a building permit based on that. And they began construction.
That's my understanding.
And adding to that, you have street names, which are the same, even though they're.
Yes.
Seemingly different roads.
And, and it, it should be mentioned too, you know, I, I don't mean to, you know, that is, those are the facts as I understand it, at least as far as the issuing of the building permit. But there is also a responsibility of the property owner, uh, to, to look at the UR map before they submit, before they design a, a new home on the property, submit a building permit application. Um, they did file an application for a road, a road assignment, road improvement, which is standard for a UR parcel. Um, so, you know, I, again, I'm not trying to point fingers of what happened, but, um, you know, uh, there's due diligence on, on both sides of this to look at the UR map and see.
So the, uh, the impact at this point is that the house is completely constructed or is it?
Not completely, but obviously as you can see.
So if they were to, um, use the suggested or the current map access point, they would have to have an interior driveway, which would clear a major portion of the property in order to reach the garage, right?
Yes.
Um, basically the length of the property through the septic field or adjacent to the septic field.
Yeah.
To get to their.
There is room. Um, so first of all, I mean, I guess you could, they, they've also begun constructing a swimming pool over this corner of the property.
Of course.
Um, that being said, there, so there's sort of two ways to look at this. First of all, okay, yes, they have a garage here, but not use a garage or convert it into something else and they could maintain access from here and, and put a driveway and park their cars over here. I understand why they wouldn't want to do that. Um, this is misleading here where you see the, the, um, foundation of the building in comparison to the property lines. They're not exact. The property lines are actually a little bit more to, to the front here.
Yeah, it shows a better on the survey.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that in a second. Um, the sanitary field is essentially in the backyard here. There is enough room, the road could come all the way around the backyard through here. There's also, I believe I calculated about 20 feet of clearance from, um, or 25 feet from the front property line to the front of the foundation. So they could just come in along the front here.
In front of the house.
And I understand why they don't want to do that, but also keep in mind that is not accounting for the fact that the, um, right of way can and, uh, apparently has, um, recently been claimed, uh, in front there. That gives them more room.
Yeah.
A driveway in the front. So. It's not as though there is no actual practical physical recourse to get a driveway to the home. And what I want to show you here, I just want to quickly show you the, uh, existing and proposed UR map. So, um, basically the parcel here is number 27. Um, again, as I showed you, 26 is owned by the town. 27A is owned by the town as clearly illustrated here. And then, um, basically the, um, although I'm showing kind of the wrong thing, you know, the wrong existing, um, but, uh, basically the idea is to come down. This is what they're requesting and this is an older version. I apologize. I'll, I'll clarify that. I don't mean to make this any more confusing than it is. But the idea would be to come in here and then have their access point be here as opposed to this, this point here. But again, all the hash mark you see here, so essentially all the hash marking, uh, along here and then up to the middle portion, the, the applicant has the right to claim, um, you know, has a matter of right under the UR map, and it sounds like they have done that recently. Um, but okay, so that was the, the previous, uh.
So, so I'm sorry, let's just go back to that point for a moment. So, so.
Existing.
Except that you say that they've recently claimed that southerly portion of Gardners Lane.
Well, I just heard that in the audience, uh, today, but.
All right. Well, let's, let's, let's assume that they, they have a right to it. So they've done that.
Yeah.
And that, that would extend all the way up the whole west side of the property, right?
West and south, as you see here, you can see that parcel, well, it's marked by a 29 just to the south here. They have claimed their halfway.
So essentially if we're looking at this survey, they could, they could put the driveway coming in off the improved portion of Gardners Lane along the southerly border and up the westerly border to gain access to the.
Right.
Maps.
Right.
Original location without, without dealing with additional clearing within the existing property, correct?
Um, other than the clearing for their driveway, um, but.
Well, there wouldn't be within the existing property, it would be in the unopened roadway.
Yes, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't need to clear portions of the town right of way or claim them or even request this UR map modification from you.
But they, they've cleared the town's portions of the right of way, practically the entire thing. Yeah.
Yes.
Already. And they're asking, so they're asking for the town to abandon our portion of 26. Yeah. To, and give it to them.
Yes.
And portion of 27A.
So I, I'm going to be pretty short with this. I'm not up for that. I think they should go off the southern area of Gardners Lane.
Yeah.
I also think within their abandonment that, that there's a historical use for trail system in there. I know as mentioned in the letter, they should continue to have that trail system where individuals connect through from Gardners Lane up into the town areas. I think having that wooded, wooded block is important there and there's alternatives for them to use as the UR map as intended.
Yeah, you know, I, I would be generally more supportive of that, but I, the problem I have with this particular situation is that we issued a building permit based on what they submitted and that's unfortunate. And I think we bear some responsibility there. And, you know, I, I, you know, you can say that there's responsibility on both sides, but I think that's really on us.
Well, building permits can be, you know, be issued in error and so.
Yes, they, yes, they can. But I mean, I think you have to give some deference because an applicant relies upon the town to say things are okay or not okay.
Well, they can still access their property, but they now go through.
They've made, but they made.
Let me just.
I'm sorry.
So they, but they access it at the northwestern side by 11, if, if they've already claimed that road instead of going over the town's property.
Yeah, because they've cleared all the way over across the road.
Yeah, I don't.
So there's another option.
So coming in off the southern side.
Correct.
Through their abandoned portion of the roadway, up the west side, under their abandoned, and don't change the.
They have, yeah, and, and.
And change the entrance point.
Sounds just like a better.
Well, if they wanted to, because it would be, it, it would, it. There, what's unique about this is that they have two front yards that they're abandoning. They have two, two, two yards that they can ban. That, that's very unique. You don't get that many other locations. So they're actually adding thousands of linear, thousands of square feet to the property just as of right, which is, at, at times we've actually said no, no to that anymore. I think they can access their property through what they have as of right.
Well, okay.
You just have to loop around more.
I also think that if the driveway is on the, are we calling it the, uh, the southern side, the abandoned part? It's going right by the front door. That makes a lot of sense to me. Why wouldn't a driveway go right by the front door?
Along the entire front of the house?
Where is the front of the house?
Little black, black dot on the left western side.
Got it.
So the house faces west and the driveway is going to come across.
Across.
Front, the front of the property.
Yep.
And, uh, so they're, they're actually going to take their access onto the property.
Like that, without.
But I guess this is the, this is the part I'm having trouble with. They'd actually would have to go off of the abandoned roadway into the property for a portion of the driveway, and then they could come back out onto the abandoned.
Like on the blue hash. That, that's, that's what I'm saying.
But they have to enter, they have to actually have some entrance into that southerly portion of the property.
Would they still need one?
Well, they would have to, they would have to have the driveway fully on the southern portion outside of the crosshatched area of the abandonment.
Not necessarily.
Yeah. Because that now becomes expanded and it's now prior to the property.
Abandoned, yeah. Yep. Essentially where you see the blue hash is their property.
Okay. I mean, I'm okay with that as right. They can enter and get to their garage. That's.
Right. I, I'm okay with that and revegetating what they've already cleared.
Yeah. And so let me, um, I just want to clarify one thing here. So basically, you know, the, the planning department's position on this was just that, um, you know, as, as, as far as the function of locating the access within a UR map, um, we didn't really see any reason, um, you know, other than the unfortunate circumstances that happen of, of the, the building permit being issued. If you just look at it as a blank slate, there's really not much of a reason here to modify the access. It's not like it makes more sense if you were starting with a blank slate to, to put it up to the northwest. It makes more sense in the southeast as it's currently drawn. And also as we cautioned the. And also as we cautioned the planning board, it's not a very good precedent to set to start amending UR maps to, to correct errors that, that happened at some point. That being said, um, I just want to illustrate this because this went along with the memorandum that you received from the planning board. The planning board, um, discussed this and they were trying to think of, um, because really the, the main issue here, the big problem that they saw was that increased clearing. And that needed for that new driveway that would come, as you can see with those arrows there, and then coming then down heading south along the western portion of the property. Um, the blue hash mark that is noted there is meant to illustrate the portion of the right of way that the applicants can claim as a matter of right. The planning board essentially noted that that's, um, somewhat of, you know, an equal amount of area there. So basically, um, the letter that they sent you is, was basically if the applicants agree to, um, you know, if you allow the applicants to take this L-shaped portion for their access, but then this portion that they're entitled to as a matter of right, if they preserve that in perpetuity, um, if they revegetate it as needed, because there is clearing that occurred in that area. And then also I think most importantly, um, showing you on the aerial, uh, this is not a part, this is not a recognized trail and not a part of an established trail system. But there is somewhat of a, uh, established footpath, um, that does exist in this area and bike path that, that essentially connects that, um, those two portions of Gardner's. If that's maintained, that there's some form of, you know, if all these things are somehow maintained in perpetuity, then it, it makes sense because, you know, essentially right now, if you, I mean, obviously this isn't a huge distance here. But if you did want to maintain this as a pedestrian link between the roads, the applicants are allowed as a matter of right to block this off completely to Gardner's. So if you, if there was some agreement here where this would be left in its natural state and this trail link was preserved so that it can, um.
So why, why?
Board was only supportive of the request if those conditions were met.
So, so if you're talking about, yeah, it, it, just to talk about that. They as of right can abandon that southerly and lower westerly portion.
Correct.
They've currently wanted to use the upper northerly and easterly side of the town property. If, um, if we ask them to abandon and convey to the town that portion, that way it remains, you know, preserved, that access for trail or whatever could remain preserved.
Yep. And, and that was.
You wouldn't have to do additional clearing. I mean, there's some to be said for not doing additional.
So then you're saying we'd be whole.
Yeah, I think we'd be whole then because you're taking maybe, it's maybe even a little bit more distance wise in area. If you took the, you know, portion they could legally abandon and convey that to the town in exchange for giving them that access over the northerly portion.
But then we have to check if they already took the abandonment on that section. Yes.
We can still condition it.
Well, they could, but if they've abandoned it to their property, they could still convey it to the town.
Exactly.
But I, I mean, you, you'd reduce the overall clearing.
But you'd also have fragmented a woodland. You put a driveway right through the middle.
It's already there.
It's not, well.
That's how they built the house. They've been accessing that portion. It's already cleared. Nope.
There's a whole section that hasn't been cleared, which is what.
It is actually clear. It doesn't show up on, yeah, because that's how they're getting in to do all the construction.
Did you go back to the aerial?
All the way going up that way.
Does anyone have a question on what kind of road that is that comes off the northerly portion? What is that? Is that just pavement? Is that dirt?
Looks like dirt.
Yeah. That's just a dirt excess and that will, will that now be paved? If we, if we do the northerly suggested route.
Uh huh.
What happens to the portion between the actual improved road and their, their property?
That would be their, their driveway.
Yeah.
Under that scenario where they conveyed the unopened, abandoned and an open portion to the south and west. Then that just becomes their driveway.
Where they would access.
Which is what it would be coming off the other way if we didn't do anything.
Yeah, essentially right now, um, and I, I tried to, this came on your agenda pretty quickly. I was trying to get an, uh, um, um, overlay of the aerial on the proposed, um, UR map. And I'm sorry, I don't have that for you. So I keep switching back and forth. But essentially right now, um, when slash now that they have claimed their, the portion of the right of way that they're allowed to, um, they could, you know, uh, without your UR map modification, they could snake a driveway in, you know, essentially, uh, around this way. And then basically they already have begun, as you can see on the aerial during construction, using that as their access. This is clear for the most part here, um, but that's what they're requesting is to keep that in perpetuity.
Was that previously cleared before the construction, that upper crescent part?
No.
Not, not the side part, but further up that attaches to Gardner's?
Road end.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't believe so. No, I can show you the older area.
Their construction took over a large footprint.
It really did. It's really unfortunate.
So that's a 2020 aerial.
Wow. Hold on a second. Just, wow. That's really unfortunate.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see there's a little bit of like a turnaround there.
Yep. Yeah.
But no, for the most part, the answer is.
And then go back to the present.
So you could reduce any further clearing. You could have them have a driveway width of that unopened road and the town keep the other portion and any disturbance revegetated by them.
So can I just, one point what Peter's sort of getting to here, alluding to, can, if you see the black trail that's on there right now, can you go back to the last photo that you had also, please? You guys in, can you notice where the trail is there?
No.
I can't, I can't.
The trail is the bottom south corner of the white, of the, of the blue going in there.
I mean, it.
So.
It might run through here.
Down, exactly. And that's still on their current plan. So the users of this area, which is heavily used with families and kids, they, they've just moved their trail. So can you go to the next one? What is, as, as is right now? Can you see how the bottom rate was there? The house went in, people are still using it or whoever's using it and just, so there's an active group of individuals that try, are trying to connect these two little neighborhoods. So.
Well, you could, uh, you could ensure that by taking that southerly portion. That's why I think maybe the best solution here is to prevent any further clearing and do a swap or at least give them an easement over the, for driveway, just a driveway easement over that northern portion retain.
Have a specific width without.
And retain the rest and maybe in.
Could amend the UR map.
So have them.
It's easterly part to be an access, to be not abandoned, you know, and it'll be open as a driveway access. That's what we typically do in the UR.
Well, you could, but you could hold it. It's actually a full road width, right? And we own both sides.
We own.
So we could, we could push it to the most advantageous side.
Right.
Which is maybe the, you know, towards the, the rounded portion.
Yeah, I mean, it's proposed on this side, but if you wanted to move it there, uh, yeah, it's up to you.
The construction vehicles cleared the entire front of the house. So it's, you know, I would like to see, and you're not going to have an answer today is if you, if we do it that way, right, and have them take it from the northwest corner as opposed to the southeast, wh- what are we gaining or losing as far as if we don't have them abandon the southern part of Gardner's and the western side? I, I'd want to see what the, you know, what are we trading?
The square footage, square footage.
Yeah.
What's cleared and what's not already cleared. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it looks on the map that they would be getting less.
See to me, it looks like they're getting more because of how deep within the front of the house, the construction vehicles cleared.
Yeah.
The trees.
They cleared right across.
Yeah, but that, as Eric said, the overlay, well, you didn't think the, the overlay was quite as accurate as. I don't know. Yeah. Maybe it's not that far off.
Yeah.
What do they have for a front yard setback? Is that a front yard?
No, I don't think so.
So it's a side, side yard, right?
Really even, it's so up to.
So they would not have actually a front yard.
Yeah. I mean, another thing, this is something actually.
Well, they would if you think that, that's what they're wanting to abandon. Go ahead.
This is a weird situation here. It's something I, I hadn't thought of until now, but another thing, although I, I don't know, I guess maybe that, that crosses the trail there. But I mean, the, the least, i- if they were going to get access here, the least obtrusive, the smallest amount of area is obviously a straight line.
Is that road open?
Well, it is open. Well, these are portions of the right of way that the town owns. This is town parcel. So you could just grant an easement.
How did we, how did we get that parcel?
And then you sever that trail.
The town owns the Gardner's Lane.
Well.
But then you're splitting the property.
They can cross that.
But that's something the planning board hadn't discussed.
Well, the other thing that comes up is if they're now taking access that way, doesn't that mean they'll, they'll have frontage on that west side? Which means they'll have a front yard, which, which now they'll probably need variances because the.
If it, if it's an easement, then no, they, they need to have their front property line along that right of way, which they don't. But the, the downside.
But if it's not an easement, then it is a front yard, right? If you conveyed.
Yeah. But I'm saying they have to go across your property here through an easement. So.
Right.
Um, it would, it wouldn't make this then a front yard, but the, uh, that, the only reason I'm mentioning that is just because in terms of area, that's the, the least amount of disturbance at, at face value. But also that would prevent that trail from being continuous unless somebody was required to walk over their driveway. So I don't know that that's something.
One of the things Peter might be getting to is that the design of this house was, they're putting the front yard in the area where they, they, they're putting their front yard. The design of the house has, has the front of the house facing the side yard.
Right.
Where they already know where the front yard was supposed to be, which is the southern entrance.
I just, this is just not.
I, I like what Kathy says. You get the apples, the apples on, on square, square footage of.
I can get you that.
Yeah. So I think we've pretty much kicked around every potential scenario here. So I guess we'll, um, have another look at this.
Yeah.
Information. Feel free to send us an email then. That's, um.
So would you, so you would like this to, you would like the planning department to get you some more information at, at the very least about the different area calculations for the different options.
Yeah, those, those different scenarios. I think we have basically three different scenarios.
Okay. Um, and then I guess we'll, we'll, um, come back to the topic before scheduling a public hearing or deciding whether or not to.
Right. So the earliest it could get scheduled would be at the 416 or was that the, what is the date of that? The 420, the 420 public here, you know.
So are they under a stop work order now?
I believe so, yes.
We could notice it on 420, right? Because he's got to bring it back on 411. We don't have another Thursday meeting until 420.
And then it'll be in, um.
And then we have to notice it on 420 for some time in May. So Eric, also just on the memorandum that was sent to us, March 13th. On the second page, they've got Gardner's Lane spelled two different ways.
I know.
So just, so we don't confuse everybody else that there are two Gardner's Lane, maybe one is spelled one way.
Maybe they should be, maybe they should be spelled different.
The other thing too, is our agenda called it Gardner's Avenue. So if anybody was checking the agenda, they may not have realized this was in their neighborhood.
Okay.
So it's actually good that we're bringing it back for, okay.
Gardeners with an I in the second one and it's.
Yeah.
Lane.
Yep.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Eric. That concludes the work session topics for today. We now will go to liaison reports.
Great. So I do, I wanted to give an update on the design development of the new senior center. R2, as you know, is developing the windmill design with input from their full team to bring the schematic, um, design portion to a conclusion. Their current work is further developing the concept and bringing engineering and sustainability criteria to the project. So some of the things that they're developing include the approach to the building, uh, front door and the drop off from the site, developing the site amenities, including walking trails, looking at the view corridors, the building form and roof lines, investigating materials for the outer, um, portion of the building as well as plantings, exploring sustainability solutions as well as fire department access. They've been engaging with the planning department, uh, when needed, when they've got questions and with, um, Chief Fuzzy Brown as far as the fire department access. In addition, we've been holding separate meetings, um, internally with R2 to discuss, um, the technology programming for the center, including the IT, the security we might need and our audio visual needs. And they've also, uh, shown us, shared with us a kitchen design layout to accommodate the in-person nutrition program and the grab and go because they've really become, uh, you know, grab and go has become a big pro, uh, program and needs, uh, a separate space for that. So they are, R2 scheduled to be here, uh, to present on Tuesday, April 18th. They'll be coming into town the day before. And, and as we've discussed, um, I, I, it's nice that they're here because they, they realized the last time around, it was more difficult to present at this level via Zoom. So they'll be here and they can, um, meet with board members and, and go over any questions or thoughts that folks have. Um, and speaking of grab and go, I just wanted to remind people that they are distributed on, it's five frozen meals distributed each week on Wednesdays. If you're 60 and over and interested, you could call 631-324-6711. And, uh, there's also a, coming up this Thursday is the Easter Passover celebration. Because Town Hall, uh, closes a half day on Friday and the senior center does not open on Friday, uh, for lunch because of that. And they wanted me to announce that they'll be serving lamb, mashed potatoes and coconut custard pie. And there will be a bonnet and fancy tie contest at the center. So that as always, folks start showing up around 11:30 and, um, lunch gets served soon after that. We also have another upcoming work session. I just wanted to let folks know the Montauk Playhouse Community Center Foundation will be here next Tuesday, um, at our work session and they'll be updating us on the need and the status of the project. Last night, the East Hampton CAC met, but I'm going to reserve that report for next Tuesday. And that's what I have for today.
Thank you, Kathy.
David.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, the 395 Panago Affordable Housing Project, our internal working team met. We're getting closer as the days go on. We had, uh, we recently had our test pits dug on there for our water. We're going to be amending our maps, uh, for top topography and also for, uh, comments that, uh, the chief of the fire department wanted us to put on there and the fire marshal. So we're going to mend the maps and get that all on and we'll get that to the planning board. We, uh, we hope for their review in the upcoming month. So that's moving ahead, at a, at a good pace. Uh, the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee met again twice this, uh, twice this week, uh, again, reviewing, uh, applications from this county years, RFA one, uh, requesting more information, uh, from some of the, uh, of, of the applicants. So that's moving forward and we're looking forward to getting, uh, recommendations. It probably, I would think by, uh, uh, by the end, potentially by the end of this month. CPF Advisory Committee met, uh, going over properties, uh, talking some, uh, about some, some other questions that they had as far as reviewing of, of, of properties. It was a nice meeting on there. Um, the Fisheries Advisory Committee also met. Uh, we're going to meet again this coming Monday. We're going to work again with the planning department on Monday to try to finalize some movement forward with, uh, the working waterfront analysis of properties for shore, shoreside commercial fisheries infrastructure. Uh, we're going to be getting a recommendation from them written, writing about, uh, black, uh, black sea bass, uh, regulation changes, how it might affect our fisheries. Uh, that's going in front of MREC, Marine Resources Advisory Council from the DEC. They like to see the board support some of us, uh, and that recommendation will have that, that language there. Uh, also that they, uh, see discussed, um, uh, two things. They discussed a little bit, uh, first of all, fisheries gear storage, which we've been talking about at our locations and also behind the Westlake Comfort Station. They're very comfortable with, uh, charging a very minor amount for our storage space determined 20 by 20 in that approximation. But also a very minor amount for that on a yearly basis, but knowing that it's important to have a deposit of, let's say a thousand dollars is the number they're saying. So that if any gear got, uh, left there that it would go abandoned, it would be removed, uh, with, with that type of, uh, securities. We had another internal meeting of the Montauk, uh, Bottomlands Inventory, uh, Commercial Bottomlands Inventory. Uh, we're working closer towards, uh, getting recommendations to the town board as far as, uh, uh, leases that Montauk Bottomlands have. Many have been expired, but also just let the board know where, where the policy and procedure has been in the past and where we can go forward. Like to let everyone know, uh, that the Westlake, uh, Comfort Station bathroom is actually planned on being installed ahead of schedule and under budget. All those.
Nice.
Oh, we hear that.
Love that.
So it's actually going to be installed next week. Again, remember this is a modular unit that's going to be dropped in by a crane. So it's actually going to be installed next week again, remember this is a modular unit, it's going to be dropped in by a crane. It'll be on site, first flush will be by the end of the week. Um, they did complete the IA system.
Having a first flush.
You got that video for me from Amaganza when we did it, right?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe we might. Sounds like a ribbon breaking. We want.
Paper cutting.
A paper cut, very good, whoa. So that's going to be installed, the IA system, what has been installed there also then too. Let everyone know about IA systems, the IA system is being installed at the Lions Field Comfort Station by, uh, uh, by the ball fields there, uh, that is, should be complete by the end of the week. Uh, and we're actually turfing the field, putting, uh, putting rolled out grass sod instead of seed to make sure that, that, that the playing field is good for the upcoming Little League season. Uh, talking about the Little League season, uh, opening day is up and coming, uh, I believe it's on the 22nd. Uh, I want to thank many of the community members and specifically the members of the board, Montauk, uh, sorry, Board of the Little League for their preparation of the Little League fields in Montauk, adding clay, they spent money on clay, they're putting it out there and they look great. And I, the last night on my way to my Montauk CAC, I saw kids already playing on it. So it's, it's great to see and they look great and they look safe. That leads me into, uh, the ball field project, uh, that's Stephen Hand's path. That is coming to a final conclusion, actually, there, I was there first thing this morning, installing the netting, fields in place, they're asphalting, um, and storage shed, so, and they're putting in sprinklers, so we're, we're pretty much days away from that being complete right now also. Uh, along with that, Buildings and Grounds is working on a full restoration of the comfort station and a restor, a restoration of the five bar and safety elements of, uh, the, the two playgrounds that we have at the location there then too. So it's getting a global look and approach for the, for the use that's upcoming. You'll see on the way out to Montauk that the Gateway Project that, uh, uh, Peter's worked hard on with, uh, uh, Assemblyman Theo and also Mr. Kishen, uh, is, is well underway right now. They're undergrounding all the, all the wiring, conduit, uh, soon, very shortly, the poles will be going down, but they are fully mobilized and moving on that, which is great. Uh, Genie did hit on to, uh, Jenny Croza did hit on the two things, beach replenishment bid is out. Uh, this was discussed at the Montauk CAC last night and also the second house bid is, so I thank you very much for, uh, taking the leadership on both of those. I want to let everyone know once again, and the chamber knows, Montauk Chamber, the town of East Hampton, in conjunction with the Montauk Chamber of Commerce, we're having a meeting tomorrow at the Montauk Fire Department at 1:30, uh, in which, uh, myself, the supervisor, other department heads, chief of police, marine patrol, fire marshal, building, uh, building, chief building inspector, code enforcement, head of planning, are meeting out there with members of the chamber to answer questions on the upcoming season. Uh, we're doing it earlier this season as we have in the past and I thank, uh, I thank those members of the town for participating. We want to make sure that the town, that everyone's aware of the regulations that we will be looking to go comply, have everyone comply with and just having an open conversation with everyone. So that's tomorrow. Uh, I believe also I have a date that was set yesterday that the Montauk, um, that the town, sorry, it's my other book, the town of East Hampton is going to be sending out our planning department. I believe it's going to be in April, we'll get a date, uh, let everyone know next week, in which like we did last, last week, where we'll help and assist them with, uh, outdoor dining permits and such then too, so that's upcoming. Uh, uh, Jeremy Samuelson and Jen Fox have put that together for a date and that'll be held at the Chamber of Commerce site. And I'll get that date to you, so you also, Sylvia, you can put it to the business advisory committee.
Yeah, so, so we had, Jeremy, which should be at this meeting tomorrow as well.
Yes, he will.
Be able to have the, you know, any of the permits and things that are needed for outdoor dining and bring people up to speed on anything with the sidewalk dining that, um, uh, we've worked on too. So there, he's going to do a second meeting?
No, it's not a second meeting, it's actually going to be an intake of those permits.
Okay.
So instead of, for a property owner, so businesses or property owners to come to East Hampton, we're going to Montauk to them.
Okay.
Uh, we did it last year at the chamber, I think we entered nearly a dozen of them and maybe answered more questions.
Yep.
It's just showing our outreach, uh, to the hamlet. Uh, they were, they were appreciated last year and it's, uh, very minor for us to do and we're going to do that again.
So David, uh, on, more on the enforcement meeting.
Sure.
Um, would it be possible to, for me to pop out and talk about special event permits?
Yes, do it.
On commercial properties on our beaches, uh, that we just made some changes.
That's great, yeah.
And help folks, uh, understand in advance.
Sure, uh, I also know litter, uh, I think the member from the litter committee is going to be there too, but I think that's great. I know I sent the special event legislation to the CAC, but getting out there to the commercial entities in the chamber, I think that'd be appropriate. Yeah, okay, I would welcome that.
Okay, thanks, David.
John's driving for Ice Cream After, anyone?
I'm in.
You're in. And that's all I have.
Thank you, David. Sylvia?
I'm sure the Wayne Scott CAC met on Saturday, we had around 60 folks attended. Uh, the May meeting will be back in the chapel, um, so that'll be the first Saturday in May. Um, David Egan was there to present, uh, as the president of the Wayne Scott School Board. Um, he gave an overview of current conditions at the schoolhouse and, um, and of the tuition students. So they have a total of 116 students, um, uh, that they are responsible for and they are concerned, um, about the impact of the school, um, on the school from the 114 Community Housing Project, that, which is within the Wayne Scott School District. Uh, Mr. Egan and Billy Babinski, who is another school board member, have met with Kathy Bert Gonzalez and with Katie Casey twice, uh, once at the, in December last year and then, uh, March 10th, I think was the other date that I had, that you had also met with both, um, David Egan and Billy Babinski.
The December meeting was Jeremy and I and then the March meeting was Katie and I.
So, um, based on past projects, uh, affordable housing projects that the town, um, is involved in, the number of students anticipated for the Wayne Scott School District is somewhere between 35 at a low and 39 at a high.
Came in at 35 and we just to be, you know, plus or minus 10%, so 35 to 39 students.
So they, um, within that number, they figured that approximately 10 of those kids would be in the K through three program on the actual, uh, physical, uh, school building. And the biggest concern that, that, uh, David Egan talked about was if 39 number is not an accurate number. And, and how does that, how will the school be able to handle that? Um, he looks forward to continuing the dialogue, um, with the town and with the housing authority, Kathy and Katie and Jeremy, anyone else who's involved, to create housing that enhances all aspects of Wayne Scott's community character. Um, we also discussed the airport, several folks had, uh, read the airport DEIS is up online. They still had a few questions, they were hoping that, um, the, uh, that the DEIS would fully explore the possibility of closure, or more fully explore, it's already there. And also more fully explore an environmental outcome if closure, uh, actually happens. Um, they felt that the DEIS at this point did not do that. I've also been in touch with Dan Rizzo and, and, and sent those comments on to him. Um, one member had also suggested that a slot system, uh, he's back talking about the DEIS, that that was not considered within, um, the DEIS and Dan Rizzo, um, sent me an email saying that the slot system is inconsistent with general aviation and therefore no scheduled service is proposed, um, for a PPR, which is our prior permission required.
Yeah, I think slot systems are generally only used major commercial airports.
And, and we, back in the day.
Had a look.
We, we, we need that one to doubt.
Back in 2015, yeah, it's very complicated trying to do that at a...
So the other, uh, issue for the airport, um, I, these questions come up over and over again.
Sure.
I mean, you know, we just, so I just want to get it back out there that we...
Right.
That we talked about it. Um, that the routes have not been, uh, yet disclosed. Uh, I know I've talked with Jim Brundage, Kathy, I think you also talked with Jim Brundage and those will be forthcoming. Several members of the committee felt that last summer was unbearable with most of the traffic over Wayne Scott. And then there was a complaint that last Sunday there were, uh, helicopters that took off at 6:30 in the morning. I did try to confirm that with Jim Brundage and he can find no trace of any, through Vector or anybody else, that there were helicopters that took off at 6:30. Southwest wind came up, but I know Kate's going to have a much longer discussion about that, so I'm just, these were the two things. Um, we're talking about restoration of Beach Lane at this point, which is always a good thing, which means we're coming to the end of the project. There was one person that said they actually had to raise the level of the road and so now when they go into their driveway, they go, they go down. Are they going to resurface that, um, to be all the same level? That was one question. And the other question I think has come up again, uh, over and over again, are they going to take all the millings and any rocks that were put on the side of the road or are all those going to come out before restoration happens? So just again, maybe chat with Jen and, or Emily.
Oh yeah, I'll find out about the leveling the road, but, uh, the restoration project, uh, the milling's coming out and rocks coming out the side of the road is the restoration.
Okay.
And then to a seated level.
And that's not been completed yet.
No, no.
Uh, the Wayne Scott Commercial Center came up, just as a, a point of reference, they recognized that the, um, zoning board of appeals had voted 5-0 that the project must meet special permit standards. Um, they again discussed the Suffolk County Planning Commission, who also voted unanimously that the application was incomplete. So they just were acknowledging these things that have already happened with the Wayne Scott Commercial Center. Uh, the gun club came up. Uh, the conversation was the public must have ample time to consider any actions pertaining to a lease. So please make sure that we don't wait until, you know, even August or September that we start discussing it now. They understand that there's, uh, litigation going on. They think that higher considerations must be given to the environment, to hikers, bikers that are using the adjoining lands and to current residents that, um, may be in distance of the gun club. Um, so additionally, they did say that they would, um, support an indoor range if that was something that could be put on the table. And, uh, Wayne Scott Tree Society also met, um, a maple tree was removed on Wayne Scott Hollow Road. Uh, I have to say Kevin Cobb was in great communication with everybody and talked with them all and gave them information. Um, he also made sure that an arborist did come and look at the tree before it was taken out and gave them a written assessment of why it was declining and what was happening to the tree and how, why it had to be removed. Uh, and he gave, and also sent photos. Uh, so Genie Croza right now is preparing an RFP to have one or more certified arborists at least be able to assist when needed. So Whitmore's arborist, uh, actually did us a favor in, in coming out and looking at it. So we want to just make sure that when these things happen again, we just have someone else we can call and we've got them already vetted through an RFP. Uh, two trees are going to be planted on Wayne Scott Hollow Road and, uh, with deer protection as, uh, Kevin Cobb was requiring. And again, I have to say Kevin showed pictures of, of how the, the, um, the, I guess, surroundings around the tree trunks needs to be done and he puts up towels soaked in, I have to get this right, garden mint deer repellent, so that the deer will stay away and they won't eat the bottom leaves. So he's going to help the tree society also accomplish that, so, so thank you again, Kevin. Um, Public Safety Partnership Meeting is what David was, uh, talking about earlier, this is going to be in Montauk. It's, and I also sent the poster to, um, Joanne Pilgrim, so she can post it on our social media platforms as well. Uh, 1:30, um, on Wednesday at the Montauk Firehouse. And, um, because of that, our business committee was early, are going to be a little bit early in the day, we've actually moved the business committee, uh, to April the 19th, which is again a Wednesday, and we'll have a debriefing of what's happened at that, some of the questions, anything that the business committee can work on. Um, and then we also wanted to, several folks were going out of town during that, um, that Easter, um, spring break and Passover week. So, uh, we moved it to the 19th. Uh, Brooks Park, we had a, the pre-application for a grant with, um, uh, Preserve New York was, uh, the pre-application was approved, this is grant 655.1. And, um, they needed additional information for the next step, so Scott Wilson, Michael Devonshire and I both answered the questions that, um, were needed, uh, for the next step, um, and, uh, making sure that everyone understood the importance of it to the community. And as an update, uh, Janet Jennings, Esperanza Leone, Jonathan Foster and Marietta Garvis, uh, went last Friday to start packing up any of the artifacts that were, um, remaining that were significant. Uh, thank Scott Wilson for making sure they could get in and, and everything was, um, open for them. So, uh, thank him as, uh, as I said, thank him as well, they packed up nine boxes, uh, from Charlotte Studio. Uh, they took photos, they had contacted Stephen Long from the East Hampton Historical Society to make sure that, that what, they took, you know, north, south, east, west photos, they made sure everything was documented, um, so they also want to thank him. And there's still more work to be done, so they'll keep moving forward and, and making sure, um, and those boxes are being stored over at the Baker House right now. Um, we also received a, um, letter, everyone, I guess, received it yesterday from the His, uh, National Trust for Historic Preservation, along with Preservation League of New York State. Just remind everyone, the National Trust for Historic Preservation said that Brooks Park was 11 to save, that we're in the most danger in the United States, um, this past year, and the Preservation League named Brooks Park the 7 to save. Um, so just reading partly what they said, um, preserving this collection of historically significant structures where Charlotte Park and James Brooks, two very important abstract artists lived and worked, is essential. We would, um, we urge the town to make meaningful steps to ensure that the long-term preservation and reuse of this property is ongoing. So, um, I'm moved from that into our own East Hampton Arts Council and every year for the past seven years, they have, um, helped with March Madness. I know we, probably a lot of us watched the game last night. Wow, I don't see a lot of heads.
I watched, it was kind of a blowout too.
Sort of a blowout, but anyway.
Watched for too long.
Congratulations to our neighbors in Connecticut.
My prediction came true.
So...
The other part of my bracket was completely blown up early.
Um, so, uh, so the East Hampton Arts Council does March Madness with the East Hampton High School. And so they've, as I said, been participating for the past seven years, that, and we, um, supply them with these, uh, four foot by four foot boards for each class to participate in an art project that has a theme to it. So this year's theme, one word, mosaic. And so each of these, um, uh, boards had to be done with, uh, with the ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th and a new one that they did. So they now have five, it's called the life skills class. Um, so you have in front of you, uh, what the, it looked like, or what the boards all look like. And then two members, Teresa Lawler and Scott Blue Dorn were the judges for the competition. And you can see that the, um, mosaic that won was, um, done by the life skills class, which is a heart surrounded by many, many colors of hands all around it. So, and I think some of the, the, uh, these are really beautiful. And so now they've done almost 30 panels that are hanging at the high school and they're really impressive when you go in there. Cause they are four by four, they're bright. And again, I thank the East Hampton High School and the East Hampton, um, Arts Council for doing this project for so many years and staying with it. And our own Parks and Rec who help us, who make, build the boards for them and, and get them over to the, to the high school. So I think that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Sylvia. Kate?
Those are beautiful, Sylvia.
Yeah, they're great.
Uh, thank you, Peter, the Spring CAC met on, uh, March 21st. Uh, the Springs Corridor Subcommittee expressed concerns about businesses that can operate without a CO. And what they're referring to is outdoor space rentals of businesses that are coming up where contractors can rent out a small space and keep their equipment. And, uh, they can operate, uh, without a CO, uh, because there is no structure. They're asking for, uh, code amendments to circumvent businesses from operating bef, without perfecting their site plan conditions and obtaining a CO, even if there are no structures on the property. Uh, the litter subcommittee spoke about the no fling spring events, which I'll talk about in a bit. Uh, and they had a question about our ability to put no household trash stickers on the garbage cans as at a beaches, as we all know. Many times folks are bringing their household trash and depositing it in the cans there. Um, I don't know if signage would help, but they feel, uh, it could be a deterrent for some folks. Uh, there was a discussion on the restoration of Brooks Park, particularly narrowing it down, the Brooks Studio. Folks who were in favor of it talked about, uh, preserving the history, uh, and also the uniqueness of the property, the 11 acres as an intersection between nature and art. Folks who are concerned are concerned about, uh, uh, the, an unknown future of who's... of who's running it, how they'll run it, and the economics of, of being able to make, to run it. So those were the, the main points of the discussion. This past few weeks, I've had the South Fork Wind monthly compliance meetings and the bi-weekly compliance meetings. The monthly is attended by all state agencies and Long Island Railroad and, and they have been doing water testing and monitoring for the permit conditions while they're working at the TJ Bay location, which is at the end of Beach Lane. And the good news is that no exceedance were reported or observed there in terms of water testing. While the cable is now onshore, it's been brought onshore and the vessels have left the area. We were recently notified that there will be a 24 hour work condition at the landfill site on Beach Lane beginning Tuesday, April 3rd, and will continue through Tuesday, April 18th. This work is allowed for completion of the cable installation activities and will be performed pursuant to Article 7, Certificate Cangetisian 75. I've been in touch with South Fork Wind and as this is a holiday weekend, I've asked for a moratorium on at least the Sunday, Saturday night to Sunday night for overnight work. And I, they will get back to me on that. Jen Garby also supported that as well. The town has also been notified, we were notified via email and in letter of an extension of time request for the final paving of Beach Lane. The request was to extend the times allowed for work on town roads through May 22nd. This, the demobilization part and the road right of way restorations, which is seeding to 80% germination, well, the germination won't happen before April 30th clearly, but that, that part will. What they're asking for more time is the actual cleanup and final paving of Beach Lane. And as you know, we had weather conditions that delayed the cable installation. There is an option to consider that the road stays temporarily covered and they come back after the moratorium in September. My recommendation is that they, we grant the extension and they get the work done before the season and leave it as, as it should be in great shape.
I, I agree with that, Kate. I think, you know, before things really get busy that we'd like to see that all completed, cleaned up and paved rather than wait until September.
Or to patch it and have patches all summer.
Yeah, I think let's get the shoulders cleaned up and the road paved and nice and neat for the season when the weather gets really nice.
I also support that.
So we need a town board resolution, John?
Thursday?
For Thursday, yeah. Thanks. The Litter Action Committee is gearing up all over the place. They've been out to Montauk. They've been out to the CACs there. As David said, they're coming to the chamber. They have a number of pickups kicking off on Earth Day, April 22nd, on Springs Fireplace Road, the meeting place, and it'll be north of the county road on the actual Town on Ri, Road. So that's north of Woodbine. And people can sign up and meet at Ashwell Hall at 9:00 AM. On the 29th of April, there'll be one in Wayne Scott Village on Bathgate. On May 6th, the, in conjunction with the trustees and Susan McGora Kieber, they'll be doing cleanup at Lazy Point. May 13th with David Cataletto for Atlantic Beach. And there's another one scheduled. I'll have more information from Montauk. And another one for Springs Close Highway in Amagansett. They'll be starting a table at the Springs Farmer Market to inform folks about littering, Don Trash East Hampton effort, and also some of our regulations regarding covering your load on the road when you're bringing garbage to the dump or transporting anything out of the back of pickup open trucks. There's a lot of stuff that falls out that's picked up there by these groups that have adopted the highway there. It's a continual effort, particularly by the recycling center. Let's see, there's some other events that I'll speak about because they're later, but I just want to highlight that on May 24th, the video competition will be judged on, at 7:00 PM at LTV Studios. And we will award the winners for the PSA video that we, we approved the, the guys to do. Let's see, I also, the composting, we have a composting work group now. We're meeting on Fridays. This group now includes Ian Calder Piedmont, Piedmont from Balsam Farms, Gloria Paul from the Energy Sustainability Committee. It is a subcommittee of the Energy Sustainability Committee. We've harnessed Mark Harbner, who is Riverhead Environmental Advisory Committee Co-Chair. They created a, a food scraps composting program in Riverhead that's successful. We've harnessed Mary Morgan from Southhold Civic Group and Drawdown. She helped create the Southhold Town's Food Scraps Pilot Program, very successful. Biddle Duke is also on from the Energy Sustainability Committee, Tony Romano from Ecological Cultural Initiatives. And they are a great resource. They're running a, a small compost food scraps program up in Hampton Bays. And the whole idea is to, for folks in East Hampton, for us to develop pilot programs so we can cut food waste out of our waste stream and save, folks can save money by doing so. And that's what I got.
Thank you, Kate. We are continuing to work on putting together the easement document packets for the FIMP, stand only beach replenishment in downtown. That should be done, I think, later this week and they'll be sent off to the Army Corps of Engineers to be reviewed. As I've said before, we're looking to try and get this project on track ASAP, hopefully this year. We're making progress and I'm confident that we'll be able to see this project move forward coming months. Much needed. We, this time of year, we're normally talking about sand replenishment for the downtown area, winter storms this year, and just regular wave action, I think, more than just storms have, have lowered the beach profile considerably. We'll do the flyover and put out to bid the sand replenishment. But the federal project is significantly larger, would extend the beach berm out over 7,000 feet from, you know, the western road end where the Benson Preserve is, all the way to Shadmore. And this would be over 450,000 cubic yards of sand initially, with a four year replenishment, fully federally funded initial project. So we're excited to see things moving forward on that. There'll be outreach directly to some of those property owners. We did get permission to, for that project to be extended. We'd asked the court to consider extending it to Shadmore on the eastern end. So there are some additional easements that we would need to put in place. So we're working on that. We had a meeting a week ago, Monday, with the Playhouse Foundation, Montauk, concerning working out a partnership to try and move that aquatic center project forward. We'll have a presentation here at the town board work session, hopefully this month, if not early May, about that proposed plan. We're trying to work out some of the intricacies of the public, private partnership. We are the landlord and property owner. There are protocols and procedures we have to follow regarding, you know, public bidding process as well as, you know, prevailing wage labor requirements as well. So just trying to work out the interface. I talked about forming a construction committee with both town staff and playhouse staff to make sure that everything runs smoothly. We're covering all our bases. We had the kickoff meeting of the 375th Celebration Committee. This is the 375th year of the town's founding back in 1648. So we're looking forward to having, you know, a celebration kickoff probably in June. The committee membership includes Guild Hall, the Montauk, Amagansett Libraries, the East Hampton Historical Society, the Springs School. We had three different school superintendents, Adam Fine, Deborah Winter, and Seth Turner from Amagansett on the, on the committee, Hugh King, our town historian, Ellen Harrison, Dr. George Ed Greer Key from Eastville. Really great community coalition of different groups. We are trying to expand out within each of the hamlets and have celebrations within the hamlets, particularly the hamlets staged over a number of months, culminating in a parade, the 350, excuse me, 375th anniversary parade. We had a parade back in 25 years ago for the 350th. Main Street was shut down for much of the day. It was a really terrific event. We'd like to duplicate that. We have a tentative date set for September 23rd. So save the date. The village, we're coordinating with the village as far as the, the logistics of, of the parade. They've graciously agreed to host and to, you know, work with the DOT for the road closure and coordinating police, et cetera. I think it'll be a great opportunity to celebrate that 375th anniversary and also celebrate all those, the very diverse community. We have all those who've participated in creating this town throughout its history, from the indigenous people to the, everyone else who's come since, basically. So we want to make sure we're represent, representing the great diversity that we have here as well as part of that celebration. Kathy and I met with the CSCA leadership. The CSCA comprises a major portion of the town's workforce. Their contract is up at the end of this year. They have demonstrated interest in beginning negotiations ahead of that expiration. We had a very, I think, productive initial informal meeting with them. And in the coming months, we'll be having more discussions as we move forward. We, we understand that there, there are a lot of pressures on people who live and work here in town. And many of them relate to monetary situations exacerbated by housing issues. We need to stay competitive within the market. We compete with other municipalities and private sector for our employees. And it's important that we, you know, address and recognize, you know, the, the challenges that we have in staying competitive. And we also acknowledge the, the great resource, the human resource that we have with our town employees and the great job that they do. The community deserves the best possible services. And those are provided by our excellent staff. And to the extent that we can support them and expand where necessary, that resource to provide the best services within town, which the community deserves and, and demands that we're going to work to do so in, in a way that's, you know, fair and equitable. So we look forward to further conversations with the union. The Town Property Management Committee met. We are now going to be meeting on a quarterly basis instead of when, it's been nine years, hard to believe, since I founded that committee. Time goes by. The committee was originally founded to deal with orphaned properties that the town had. And we've been very successful in dealing with a number of those properties. Fort Pond House, Duck Creek, that, that renovation at Duck Creek Barn, the, the barn at the Farm Museum. We've dealt with Second House Restoration. Did a lot of the legwork on, on Brooks Park in terms of working out templates for outside entities to manage town properties. But at this point, we've run through, Boys and Girls Harbor is another one. So we've run through most of the properties that we initially set out to, to deal with. There are still some, some town properties, but, you know, until, unless and until the town board, you know, decides to task committee with moving a property forward, we're going to meet quarterly. Let's see, David mentioned the Gateway Project, where we're working to underground the utilities and remove the poles and wires at the entrance to Montauk. That's one of the, my favorite views in town from, from highway coming into Montauk and seeing the ocean there and looking over the hamlet of Montauk. And that view will be improved so much more. So the aesthetics of removing the utility lines there and along the old highway, worked with the private sector on that, has really improved that view, but it's also improved the resiliency, storm resiliency by getting those lines undergrounded. So we're hoping to try to have, have those poles removed and that view in place for Memorial Day this year.
Nice.
If everything works smoothly with all the various utilities that we have to contract with. You know, you have the cable vision and you have PSEG and I said cable vision alties. Sorry. So coordinating with all those different utilities, Verizon and whatnot to get the wires off, the poles buried, the private property connections as well. So that's all underway and so far going smoothly. And that's all I have for today. And we do have a few resolutions.
Yes, I have the first one. Grab it out. I'd like to offer a resolution 2023 456, which is a one-year agreement for ESRI ARC GIS maintenance contract. This is where the town has retained Environmental Systems Research Institute, which granted the town of East Hampton access to the ESRI software on an unlimited basis, including maintenance on all software offered through the ELA for the terms of the agreement. And the town wishes to extend the ESRI ARC GIS agreement for an additional year of service for a period of May 4th through, 2023 through May 4th, 2024. And ERIS submitted a proposal dated March 2nd that provided such services with an annual subscription at set cost to the town not to exceed $990 for the agreement year. And whereas a sole source letter was provided by ESRI further indicating that they are the only source that maintains such project, now be it resolved that the town supervisor is hereby authorized to execute all documents to enter to the ARC, it should be GIS instead of ARC GS maintenance agreement with the Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. for a one-year contract at the annual fee of $990.
Second is amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Resolution 457 is detective training. And that is to authorize training with the town police department. This is a approval sought retroactively for the town detective unit to attend to cellular records and tower dumps preparation for court-sponsored FBI National Academy Associates. And that was held on March 31st, 2023, not to exceed $150.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Resolution 458, some budget modification, the 2023 capital plan funding. It's resolved that the town board directs budget office to make the following budget modifications to authorize each respective capital plan project. We have four different lines here from appropriated under reserve fund balance in the amounts of $1,056,300, $412,500, $50,000, $44,000, $1,056,000. $1,056,300 is transferred to other funds. $412,500 is transferred to other funds, as is the $50,000 and the $44,000 in various budget line accounts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Carrie, that concludes our regular agenda. Motion to go into exec session.
I make a motion, we go into exec session for CPF, contracts, leases, easements and personnel. Second.
All fair?
Aye.
Pass Carrie. It is 1:50. Shall we reconvene at 2:30? Does that work for people?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks so much. Thank you Jason. Stay well, everyone.